Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's February 28th, the Board of County Commissioners' regular set meeting. At this time, if you would like to join us, we're going to have the invocation, and we're also going to have Sergeant Rick Fryhoffer. He is a Vietnam veteran, Air Force, served in 1968 to 1972, and he's E-Force Sergeant. He's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd like to join us, please stand and remove your hats, please. I'm sorry, Pastor Doug Alexander is going to be leading us in the invocation. How could I forget you?
I don't know why you forgot me. It's Black History Month.
I know, you're so stupid.
I can't figure it out. Anyway, I just want to say I'm grateful to be here and thank you guys, and I appreciate your guys' leadership in Citrus County. Let's pray. Father, thank you so much. We come before you with Thanksgiving in our heart, with a grateful heart. We ask you to bless these commissioners today, everyone that's here, God, let them be able to work together, come together in the unity so that they can govern over all the Citrus County businesses and affairs. We pray that this community and also those that are here today, Lord, would accept what happens here today. We're so grateful. Continue to bless these commissioners, bless the Sheriff Department, and all those that are serving military. We're so grateful. Lord, we say this prayer, and would you join me in saying the Lord's Prayer? Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thou will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sergeant, and his wife Angie is joining us. Thank you.
Thank you so much for honoring veterans. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your service. Madam Deputy Clerk, if you could do the roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. It's 28th day of February 2023. In attendance are Chair Ruthie Shabah, First Vice Chair Holly Davis, Second Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Commissioner Jeff Kennard, and Diana Finnegan, the Assistant County Administrator Maricel Rodriguez, and the County Attorney Denise Diamond-Lynn.
Thank you. Approval of agenda. Board, I would like to have the courtesy of the board to move item G2. Colonel Witt asked that it could be moved in the agenda. I'd like to move it before the open to the public, if you're okay with that. I would also like to move B9 to after G3. There's correction of titles and some scribbler errors, and we have agenda item G3 addressing some of these changes. Also like to pull E12 and have staff bring it back as part of a comprehensive plan for our airports. We have four separate agenda items on our airports alone, and I think perhaps we need to have a workshop, and we need to plan for the future because having four agenda items on this meeting, it's letting me know that we have to start planning and making sure that staff knows the direction we're going and what we're planning for the future, if you're okay with that. And the last one I have is E2. I just want to pull the budget transfer from the Visitors Bureau. I think that needs to go back to staff. And is there something about E2, just that one section I can pull, Madam Attorney?
Just the TDC.
Just the TDC, okay, very good. And then, Madam Assistant Administrator, do you have any additions or deletions to the agenda for the board?
We do, Chair. Item E6A, the core civic contract monitoring. We added the daily assessment amount. Item G1, the reorganization of Public Works. We revised the organization chart. Item H4A, the public hearing for stream vacation. SV-21-01, GAFNE for qualms has been updated to set the public hearing on March 28 at 1:50 p.m. And K1A, discussion and vote, CECO energy request for letter of support for DOE grant application. A map has been updated to the backup.
Very good. Board, is this okay with you? Are you, what's your pleasure, looking for motion?
Madam Chair, do you need a readback on all this? Or just the moves, or the deletions, or the pulls? Because that's a lot. I took notes.
Okay, do you have it? You want to read it back?
No, I'm just asking if you need it, for the record. I can make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes as described.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard, with the changes and additions. Is there any public comment about our agenda?
We don't usually take public input.
I didn't think so, but it's on my list here, so, okay.
That's one of the matters that's within the purview of the board.
Thank you. Listen, I do as I'm told, and it's okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The agenda passes 5-0. Thank you. The consent agenda.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety?
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Weren't you going to...
I already pulled...
Was it B9?
B9.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry. Just wanted to make sure we've got that.
Do I need to modify?
Yes, that was my first one I did. Okay, so, thank you, sir. I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard for the consent agenda in its entirety.
Do I need to modify my motion to reflect that B9 has been removed?
It wouldn't hurt.
Okay, so modified.
Second.
Madam Chair.
B7. No, that was E12. Yes, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Okay, so B7 is not pulled. We pulled E12.
Correct.
Maricel, was that the right one? Okay.
I'm just trying to get clarification because you were talking about you were pulling stuff that was...
Well, there's four. There's actually four agenda items for the airport, so, okay. So we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kennard to accept the consent agenda minus B9, and I need a second.
Second.
From Commissioner Davis. And is there any further board discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. We are at item C, Proclamations. This is a proclamation. I need a motion and a second to accept C1.
Madam Chair, motion to approve C1?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any other board discussion on this proclamation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. If you can join me up front. Thank you.
Anyone representing the Chronicle, come forward, please.
Okay. "The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, Proclamation Newspaper and Education Week 2023. Whereas research tells that the best way to help children discover the joy of reading and become lifelong readers is to involve them early and often. And whereas helping the child learn and love to read improves students' chances for success in school and beyond. And whereas research shows that students who learn using newspapers as educational resources are more likely to become lifelong readers and inform and engage citizens. And whereas Newspaper and Education is an international program that encourages the use of daily newspapers as a living textbook for students from primary to adult levels, adult education levels. And the Tampa Bay Times and Citrus Chronicle Newspaper and Education Program serve educated students and families by providing classroom newspapers, companion materials, and instructional support. Newspaper and Education is a commemorative and celebrated annually through the first full school week in March. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim November in Education Week 2023, Newspaper and Education Week 2023. They encourage students to read the newspaper daily in school and at home to enhance and enrich their lives." Signed by all five county commissioners.
Thank you. I see Colonel Witt back there. We have moved you before open to the public. If you'd like to step forward and board, we're going to jump to G2. Oh, hello, Sheriff. I didn't see you back there. Sorry.
I was engrossed in newspapers and education and reading a couple of articles in the newspaper today that I had to not have a chance to get to, Madam Chair. So, thank you for pulling us forward since we've got a pretty aggressive training schedule this afternoon with the agency and quite a few things that we're trying to accomplish while we're enormously busy with tending to the challenges that every law enforcement agency in America is dealing with today. And we're really proud of our team, and we're really humbled to have the opportunity to present Mr. Chris Evans before the board today for consideration for your approval of his installation as our next Emergency Management Director for the county.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Evans, would you like to say anything?
Just wanted to say good afternoon, and if there's any questions for me, I'd be glad to address them.
Well, I'm glad to see you back. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I'm sure Deputy Hess is very thankful to have you back.
Captain Hess is elated.
Captain, yes.
With a great deal of anticipation waiting on the final outcome of our discussion and subsequent vote. He's done the yeoman's work for a number of months for us finishing up the 2022 hurricane season and represented the agency and, of course, our county exceptionally well in everything that he's ever endeavored to do. And we continue to throw Troy into the breach, and he never fails to achieve outstanding results for us. And we're really thankful to have someone of Troy's caliber on our team to be working tirelessly to make Citrus County a safe community for all of us to enjoy and to really get through anything that comes our way should a disaster befall us.
Well, I appreciate both of these gentlemen, both Colonel Witt and you, Sheriff, and I appreciate Captain Hess. He walked me to my car last meeting. It was quite far and quite heated person, so he took care of me, so thank you for that. And I hope you have a quiet hurricane season if the board sees fit to have you in this position. So, is there any other comments the board would like to make?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
That it's my pleasure to make a motion that we approve Chris Evans as the director of our Emergency Management, Emergency Operations Center.
My pleasure to second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment from the public regarding G2?
Chair, can I request clarification? He said of the Emergency Operations Center.
Emergency Management Director.
Thank you. And you got that. Okay. So, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on G2? Seeing none, is there any further board discussion?
Can I have the second verification, please?
Yes, I will second that.
Board? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and sir.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you, as always. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we are at open to the public. If anybody wishes to address the board at this time, please step forward. Fill out a green card. You will have three minutes to speak. If you're registered as a group, you have five minutes. All comments are directed to the chairman. Thank you. First speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Don Marcott. I'm here with my wife Joanne and several of my neighbors. We own property at 2183 North Slough Foot Path. I want to call your attention and apologize for getting these maps to you and not sending it to you. If you can take a look at this while I'm talking about it. That's a map from your property appraisers' office. And this shows the canal on which that we all own property, and we value the canal, and we really enjoy the waterways of Kings Bay and the Gulf of Mexico. I want to let you know that recently, wife and I are just at the beginning stages of constructing a home. We want to make this our permanent home, and we really love Citrus County. I wanted to start out by saying thank you for your service. I know how that is. I work for the municipality myself, and I really appreciate what you do. Anyway, we're going to make this our retirement home on this canal. But recently, as of late last year, I was made aware of a dock that was constructed in this canal that basically impedes the navigation for any of us to even get through at any type of low tide whatsoever. I don't even know what it's like during high tide during the winter season. It's probably very bad. I've had communication via email with Commissioner Kennard and Steve Howard as well, and we've all been communicating via phone and email. But we thought that it would be best to bring this to your attention today and face to face. So I wanted to let you know that, you know, at this location, 2160 is where the, on Waters Edge, is where this dock was constructed. It's been 50, over 50 years with 13 different property owners that there was never a dock constructed there, and there's a reason for that. It's very narrow, and there shouldn't be a dock there. But we're coming to you today because we have some issues. And there's 26 of us that are being affected, property values, rental value, rental income. And it's just not right. All of our property values are declining. I'm going to make my request. You know, we're obviously permitting, there's mistakes that can be made. I'm in the same business myself. But I want to, you know, for you to acknowledge that we have a problem. I want, I would like this to be on a future agenda and discuss how we can get past this. Either the dock has to come down, or we need to do some more dredging in the canal. And I know there's a lot of others here to speak about this, so I'll let everybody else chime in on that. Oh, by the way, this is, the other image is what is the image of the canal or the dock that was constructed, which you can see.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Sabrina Watson, LaCanto, Florida. I'll be speaking for Exceptional Life Project today, so I'll take five minutes, please. Thank you. I have a number of items to get through that I'm going to try to get through kind of quickly. I had an interesting morning. I was asked to come down and speak to the Hernando County Board of County Commissioners this morning. It seems that they are telling their citizens that the Livestream Project would be on the border of both counties and that it would be a dedicated children's facility, which is absolutely, positively not the case. So I made sure that they understood that it would not be on the border, it would not be a dedicated children's facility, and in fact, children would still be going to Leesburg. I also made sure that they understood that Livestream was a $60 million organization for profit and that it has a long history and long chain of abuses, including rape and death. I also made sure that they knew that the contracting of Livestream was actually run through Lutheran Services and DCF as well, with everybody taking a cut of the pie. In addition to that, I made sure that they understood that there are no metrics on how well this organization helps or doesn't help anybody, as we're pretending it's some kind of proprietary information, whether or not you actually help people. So I wanted to make sure that the public here knew that there seems to be, we've got some kind of mishmash of stuff going on here that doesn't seem to be the appropriate case for the Livestream facility. Secondly, I'd like to talk about public records today. We have, for over a year now, the county clerk has a website that is non-functioning and non-searchable, and I keep getting that there are no records available when I'm asking for searches on agenda items for over a year now. This is a clear and direct violation, and I've talked to you guys about this before. It's a clear and direct violation of Article 1, Section 22 of the Florida State Constitution, access to public records. In addition to that, we've got Mo Baird. She's now hiding and requesting that the legislature's hide voting information and voter information. Again, a clear violation of Article 1, Section 24 of the Constitution of the State of Florida. And I can only, I have to make the comment that I can only think that there's only one reason to hide those records. Only one reason I can think of, and I'm sure that the other people in this room can think of that reason as well. But now it seems that we've added the county to the list as well. I asked for a records request for a county commissioner job description. I wanted to know exactly what my county commissioners are supposed to be doing. Lo and behold, I got a no responsive records found. So there's only one of two possibilities here. The first possibility is that this commission doesn't exist. It's not legal. It shouldn't be meeting, and nothing that it does is viable or legal either. Or, the second possibility is that we have untrained records personnel or personnel that are possibly instructed to say these things to people asking for public records requests. So I want to make sure that everybody understands that we seem to be hiding county business with this lack of public records request. Speaking of hiding county business, let's talk real quickly about the Outstanding Commissioners list, which, of course, I brought with me, seems to be hiding public business as well. We've got four pages of Outstanding Commissioners lists that I am curious is how any county commissioner can communicate with any other county commissioner on this list without violating the sunshine laws? Since the only thing we seem to be discussing in this room is the addition or removal. So apparently, only one of you is aware of what's actually happening in this list when we decide to add or remove? Again, that is a direct violation of the Constitution, Article 1, Section 24, as was the recent shenanigans of the $2 million being brought to a vote at the last meeting. Let me read that real quick to you. "All meetings of any collegial public body of the executive branch of state government or of any collegial public body of a county, municipality, school district, or special district, at which official acts are to be taken or at which public business of such body is to be transacted or discussed shall be opened and noticed to the public," which that clearly was not. We had an agenda item snuck in early. So there's a whole lot of violations there, and it may indeed well be a malfeasance violation as well because you do actually have to discuss it with the public when you decide to spend millions of dollars of their money. Anyway, never fear. I'm happy to keep this all straight for you guys. Love you long time. Thank you much.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, council members. My name's William Brower. I own a home at 2176 North Waters Edge Drive. I have a handout here I prepared so that you can easily follow what's transpired at our property. Could I hand it out?
You can give it to the clerk. Thank you.
There's five, and they're all stapled together. I've outlined it so you could see what's happened. I own, I am here seeking help in a terrible situation that has impacted me and my community. We live on a narrow canal in Crystal Shores. The owners of 2160 North Waters Edge Drive, an American marine, have erected a dock and a boat lift directly over the access and egress for me and my neighbors to get to Kings Bay and the Gulf. The newly installed dock and lift is in the deepest part of the canal, making it impossible to navigate as it is very shallow over solid limestone rock bank. The only time I can get out now is during high tide, maybe an hour before, maybe an hour out. So it's terribly limited, my time out on the river. I've already ventured out twice. I was the first one to go out and see that they put a piling right over our canal that we follow every day. On the way in, the homeowner says, "Go around it." I'm with my wife. I went around it. Sure enough, I hit bottom. New boat scratched up the bottom. Realizing that if the tide went out anymore, I'm not getting in, and I'm not getting out anymore. So basically, this dock has landlocked us. I did reach out to the homeowner immediately to let him know what happened. He told me that I have a permit. There lies the problem why I'm here today. Permit number 202207645 was granted in error and omission. It does not adhere to the statutes that prohibit blockage and impedement of navigable waters. I am here today to make you aware, this is a very serious and terrible situation. In 53 years, and with three owners at that property, there has never been a structure, and that is because there is no room for a structure. I am here today asking you to please open an investigation into the permitting process on how this could have happened so that this permit can be pulled and the pilings removed. I came here to retire. I'm an avid fisherman-outdoorsman. My whole life, I've been a charter captain for 20 years where I come from. Never heard of blockages like this, so I was shocked. Needless to say, I haven't slept well that night, and I hope you can help.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, folks. My name is Robin Humphrey. I'm also a neighbor of Bill's, just spoke. I've been there for 24 years, and I've been using the same canal he referred to for that length of time and never had any trouble getting in and out of the Gulf or the Kings Bay. When I joined the Navy and many other times, I swore to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the nation. And let me read you one, and I know you have as well. Let me read you one. This is 333 U.S. Code 5403, Obstruction of Navigable Waters Generally Warves Excavations and Filling. And I'll just read you the first sentence, and you can read the rest of it. I'll hand it out to you. "The creation of any obstruction not affirmatively authorized by Congress to the navigable capacity of any of the waters of the United States is prohibited." And it goes on and on and on, explains that. So I'm just asking you to uphold the law. This permit was perhaps done with all good intention, but the result... This permit was perhaps done with all good intention, but the result was a dock that obstructs the waterway. There's no question, if you see the picture, you can't have any questions about the fact that you can't get through anymore. And thank you for your time, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service. Next speaker, please.
My name is Mark Sims. I'm also one of the neighbors that are affected by the dock on 2160 Waters Edge. I have a vacation home there that I also rent out, short-term rentals, and this dock has completely made it impassable. A lot of my income, my rental income, is based on people coming to Crystal River to use their boat. They cannot use their boat because they cannot get past this, past this dock one way in either, I mean, even a medium tide, you can't even get past it. So low tide is completely out of the question, it has to be almost a completely high tide to get through there. And I'm with my neighbors, same second to everything that they've said, and we just want to get this on the agenda to get looked at, because obviously, there was an issue with permitting this dock. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Teri Burns. I have a property at 2178 North Waters Edge Drive. We have had this property for eight years. It is a vacation rental home, used pretty much exclusively for that purpose. We pay our mortgage with the funds from that rental property. Our property can no longer be used in its current capacity due to this dock. I have a renter there now who has had to move his boat to another property because he cannot access Kings Bay. This is causing a financial burden for us. It is also causing a tax burden because our property generates taxes for Citrus County to the extent of $80,000 plus per year income. We feel that this is an injustice. We have been able to do, use our dock for eight years. We are no longer able to do so. I have a hard time understanding how one person, one family, can impact us in this way. Twenty-six families are now unable to reach the bottom of Kings Bay. There's a tree that overhangs the area. It's in a wetland, so the tree cannot be cut down. We can't even bring our boat in because of the height of our boat hitting the top of this tree. The water level on a mean tide is one and a half foot. When I have a renter call me, I have to ask them, "How deep does your boat draft?" I'm, I have at this time 18 families on my books. 18 families that I'm going to call and tell them that they can no longer rent my home. This is a matter of urgency, it's a matter of time. We need to get this resolved in a timely manner. It's not just about being able to recreate on our waterway, it is also about our financial well-being, and I would appreciate your immediate and urgent attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. You can give your card to the clerk. Thank you.
Teri Webber Nellis, Inverness. After listening to all these people, I'm like, I feel for them, and I'm scratching my head. I think that the county has a problem with permitting and its building department, which I think you've all known about for a while. I wanted to leave this for the commissioners. This is concerning Inverness Village 4. I'm trying to get the county to enforce an ordinance now, and I've been working on it for over two months. I keep getting shoved to Eric Landon, then Mary Jensen, now it's back to Carl Jones. So I feel for these people, because this county, I don't know what's going on in your building and permitting department, but it's affecting the citizens. So this is a notice of, from the Department of Environmental Protection against Vander Vol Construction. They're in violation. We know they're in violation with mud. I mean, when is it going to stop? When is the county going to help us to at least enforce the ordinance that's on your books? It's been months that I've been working on this. Mary Jensen will be back in touch with me after she meets with Carl Jones, but it's just been a circle. And I feel horrible for these people, because they're going to be on a roller coaster too, because nothing ever gets taken care of. So if I can leave this over here for you all to see, there's water running into wetlands down in our area, there's sediment going all over the place, and you have an ordinance on your books that we found. And I know I brought this to your attention before the new board members were here. We begged Denise Lynn to find something to help us. This is a Band-Aid on a really bad situation that we're going through, but we'll take any help we can get. We found it, nobody else found it, we just want it enforced. It's a windy day, we have trash blowing all over our neighborhood again, I'll go home and clean up my front yard again, you know. Please, do something, help us, and help the people with the dock. You know, find out about the permit. The permitting department in this county, there's something not right, the pieces are not adding up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Karen Estes, City of Inverness. I'm here today to speak on your item, I think it's E17 Cardinal. I know you're going to have more public hearings regarding this, but my, I wanted to mention first off, that sometime back when all the planning was going on with the interchange and changing it to mixed use, this particular piece of property, Cardinal Forms LC, was added in. It should have been a standalone application, because it would have had to go through a very long process of comprehensive plan planning. But now it's in the mixed use, there's a little few shortcuts, which concerns me quite a bit. But I was grateful for Mr. Sherman, though. One of them was for the 12-acre lake that was going, that were proposed, 12-acre lake. That lake has been taken off the board, and again, I'm grateful for Mr. Sherman doing that, because it would, really, the runoff on that over time would be very detrimental to the groundwater. It has to do with the aquifer and where the water, what spring shed would that water come from. So again, what I'd like to propose is whether this particular owner or if he sells the property, that this particular concern of mine runs with the land, and nobody can go around digging holes on this property. I just think it's outrageous. My second concern was the Cardinal Street from the interchange out to 19. It's going to take considerable traffic when this comes forward. So it's going to be four lane, you're going to need sidewalks to have state streets. My concern is, we are in a situation with the county now, that we don't have enough money to fix what we have. My question to this board is, and I'm hoping that nothing pertaining to Cardinal will come forward above what we already have, you know, needs for. I don't think it's fair to the citizens, unless they're going to find grant money somewhere, I don't know. But I think we need to fix what we have, take care of the situations, or at least get, you know, a good jump on everything before anything's done in this area. Also, my other concern was, which I think is just off the board, but I'm going to say it anyway, is we've taken 147 acres of agricultural and rural residential off the board. That's a big concern of mine. We've already done with Holder Industrial Park, that's a whole square mile of agriculture lost. We need food, and our new agriculture commissioner, Mr. Simpson, he ran his platform on conservation of agriculture. So we, as citizens and decision-makers, should be very keenly aware of what we're doing. And also, I guess I have to be quiet, don't I?
Thank you, Ms. Estes.
Well, be well, and congratulations on everybody here.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Ms. Estes. Karen, could you fill out a card, please?
I did.
Okay.
Hello, Commissioners. Steve Meckler, from the failing state of Maryland. But I'm kind of shocked at what's going on right here, it's kind of a curveball to me. Of Maryland, you have the Amory Corps of Engineers, they would never let you block a waterway, so I don't know how that happened, and my heart goes out to them. With the original reason I came down, I seen a video where our supervisor, Elections, was asking to not have E-Verify for employees. And maybe I misunderstood that, but going by Maryland, it was probably 2005, Maryland's a no-E-Verify state. Prince George's County, they allowed illegals to work on the Board of Elections within, and then Montgomery County followed that in the same year. So it was the following year, okay, illegals can now vote in the local elections. And two years later, that morphed into you vote on any election. So if this comes up, maybe I misunderstood it, because it really sounds crazy to me when the governor's pushing E-Verify. If it does come up and I'm not here, please remember what I said. I'm only warning you guys of what I seen up there. That's the only reason I come down and speak out, so that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you.
No clapping, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Deb Spence, Crystal River. I'd first like to start out with compliments to the Sheriff's Office yesterday for the arrest of what is nationally being called Seditious Panda. There is a post that is out there from the Sheriff's Office, and at last count, there were 563 responses. And if you read through those responses, you really get a feeling for the heartbeat of what's going on in this county. So I do suggest that people read and find out what people are actually thinking and feeling. What I really want to talk about today is Livestream. It kind of came up at the end of the meeting last time, and I know it's been talked about many, many times, but I went to the budget, which is 536 odd pages, and I can tell you how many animals have been turned into the animal shelter, I can tell you how many fosters have been adopted, I can tell you how many library cards there are, and how many books have been checked out. I can tell you how many fire runs there are and the response time. What I can't tell you is how many Baker Acts we had last year. What I can tell you is that we have a budget of $990,000 for Baker Act, for Livestream. But I don't see a contract associated with that. There's also $40,000 for transportation, which I assume is for the Sheriff's Department. Both of these are run out of the Sheriff's Office. And that's kind of a question that I have, is that the best use of it to law enforcement, or does this become a mental, a public health issue more than a law enforcement issue? I was at a meeting last week with Livestream, with NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness, and they put on quite a dog and pony show for NAMI. They had all the slick paperwork that they needed, and they talked about all their programs. They said that they have 2,500 clients from Citrus last year, but there were thousands more visits, so that's the first step to come, and those individual people. When the veneer started to come off the presentation is when NAMI started to ask questions about, well gee, we got this phone call from somebody who was threatening to kill someone with a knife, and they were referred to Livestream. And when the NAMI did a response to it, they said nothing happened when they went to Livestream. There is a program that Livestream has, which is court-appointed, that after you have been Baker acted for a few times, the courts don't get involved and mandate you have treatment done. They said, "How many times do you have to be Baker acted?" And I said, "Well, three, four times, you know, it varies." NAMI said that they have a client in Citrus County that has been Baker acted 12 times and is still not part of the program. There's a lot of questions that are going on between Livestream and this county. I know that Commissioner, um...
Canard.
Canard, I'm sorry, sir, made a comment that Hernando County is pushing to get this done. If Hernando County wants to go through this whole process that we're going through now, I say let them. But we really need to be clear with what the $2 million is going for, and yes, they are planning on using the center's property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Don Dobbs, I live off of Cardinal. I've been hearing all kind of nonsense, what's going on with this property. I went to the planning board, and they told me everything was off, that it was no longer. Didn't have to worry again until they put up a zoning sign. I found out this morning on the way to work that this, that there was something going on with it. I just want to voice some concerns. I'm from Miami originally, I've run from Miami. I went to Fort Myers, I ran from Fort Myers. I went to Bradenton, I ran from Bradenton. They all became Miami at a lesser degree. You know, the crime that went on, my parents' front door was pulled off and in the road when the house was found to break in. I've had friends killed, I've had, the drug deals were going on everywhere. I graduated high school in 1980, and I could tell the gun battles going on from the crime because of the overpopulation and all the nonsense going on. By the sound of the gunfire, you knew when the cops were involved, because they had 12-gauge shotguns. The dealers had the Uzis and all that stuff, you could tell who was... But I'm just quite concerned, I don't want to have to run from Miami again. Also, I've got the best water I've ever had in my life on my property, I have a well. The well's on my street, what they can tell me is, they're from 39 feet to 119 feet. I don't know what mine is, that's just, there's no record of individual lots. They're shallow wells. Where are all these houses going to get the water? And what's it going to do to our wells? If they're going to dry up, who's going to drill my well? You know? The other thing is, I lived on the beach in Bradenton. When, when, when the population started exploding, it'd take me two hours on the weekend to get off the beach. I could get on a little quicker, because I knew some backroads that other people didn't know. But it was just absurd, the amount of growth that was allowed to happen. I don't want it to happen again to me. The other thing is, living on the beach, red tide was a concern. I don't know if you've ever seen it, but I've seen miles and miles of dead fish as far out as you can see. There, they ran rank up and down the beach, easy to clean up. What are you going to do with them here? They're in, they're in the mangroves, they're in, the smell is unbelievable. It's all caused by pollution, caused by, people want to have a green yard and all that, and You know, if you take all the safe places for people that just want a quiet life to run away from, where are they going to go? I've got friends in Montana, it is almost legal to shoot California people, because they've just overrun the place.
Thank you, sir.
You know?
Thank you for coming today, and welcome to Citrus County.
I've been here five years.
We moved Doug from Sarasota, so I know. Thank you. Thank you, Doug.
Good afternoon, my name is Diane Liptak, I'm from Hernando County. I attended here the first time two weeks ago, just to see what was going on in a neighboring county, because I had heard that there was, to be something going on between Hernando and Citrus with Livestream putting in a mental health facility. Now, we all know mental health facilities, we used to be called insane asylums. We also all know of the abuses that trailed after all these insane asylums, and they are Now, what I heard about this in Hernando was that our commissioners believe that we have a horrific number of kids that are being put into the system every month, 30 to 45 children, and they were going, they are looking to work with you on another facility that will be on the border between Citrus and Hernando, and that it will be strictly a youth facility, that there will be a child psychologist on staff, and that there will be all the necessary licensing and whatever that's to be in place to have the children now go to that new facility. However, it seems that Livestream has no intention of putting a child psychologist there. I'm presuming that also means that there will be not the necessary licenses or maybe appropriate staff to be able to take care of the youth. appropriate staff to be able to take care of the youth, which means that the youth will still have to go to Leesburg. And Hernando is looking to have them close, and that's part, a large part of what's going on. And if you're thinking about it, at 30 to 45 kids a month in Hernando, and I know that Citrus and Pasco are running about the same figures. If we just extrapolate and say that the same thing is happening in the other 67 counties in the, in the state, then at 30, that's over 24,000 children. At 45, that's over 36,000 kids that are going into this system. I happen to have here with me 15 reviews that I printed off about Livestream by people who have actually been there, been in there, as either submitted, put themselves in for care, or were entered for care. If you want to talk about abuse, this is what you're planning to put your kids in with. And since it's not going to be a child facility, and they're going to be stuck in Leesburg again, what are we doing with this? Why are we spending all this money to keep the kids in the same place? And at least in Hernando, it's not going to make any sense.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Lynn Turk. Of course, I've been up here before, mainly about Cardinal Street. And like all the people who live on Cardinal, obviously, it's a quiet, right now, it's a quiet road. It has changed from being Cardinal Lane to being Cardinal Street, to being some number. It's got some number on it now, 482 or something like that. Anyway, I understand that growth is going to happen, so that's not why I'm up here. It is primarily because of the road. The road is so narrow that two trucks can barely pass each other, unless have somebody try to walk or ride a bike on it. Now, I was at a meeting with Holly Davis when Randy Oliver said it was going to be four-laned. I believe that was almost a year ago. Is anything happening? Is it going to be four-laned? Is there going to be a bike trail? Before we put in Cardinal Farms, I think that's something that absolutely needs to be addressed, because if you're not going to be able to widen the road cost-wise, then maybe Cardinal Farms should be 44 Farms. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, at this time, I'm going to close open to the public. If there's any Commissioners that would like to make comments.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and step out there on the Water's Edge Dock. I've been out there. I really couldn't see the dock from the road and have not, have not attempted to navigate it by water. But just by the pictures and all the feedback that I've gotten, that there is an issue out there with the way the dock was, was constructed, and it does appear to block navigation of the channel out to, out to the Crystal River. I've spoken with some of the homeowners out there, and the feedback also that, that we've gotten from, or that I've, that I've gotten from the county administrator, is that all of the rules were followed. It met our code to be permitted, and it looks like, not to play a blame game here, because that doesn't help them, but Army Corps is, is the agency that should be protecting the navigability of that waterway, and they permitted the dock also. I don't know if it was DEP or Army Corps or both that's been back out there to look at it. I don't think that, that Army Corps has necessarily closed the book on, on this issue, but I'm not opposed at all to putting it on the agenda. Let's have a discussion. And I, I don't, I don't know if there's any resolution to it on our, on our part, but certainly what we can do is look at, look at our code and consider modifying our code so that a dock like this could not be permitted in the future to block other navigable waterways. So I, I would be, I would be all in favor of putting it, putting it on the agenda. Let's have more of discussion and get, get some information from staff on it.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, the Inverness Villages enforcing the, the ordinance on the books. I'd like to find out more of what's, what's being asked there and, and why they're being bounced around to, to speak to different, different staff members, and not seeming to go anywhere there. And let's see, Karen and I agree, we've got, we've got a lot of infrastructure that needs to be repaired. Impact fees that we're collecting for transportation must be used to expand capacity. Those impact fees, transportation impact fees cannot be used to repair existing.
Sir, could you please keep the cross-talk down? It's hard to hear up here. It's disruptive to others in the audience. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Kennard.
They can't, they can't be used to, to repair existing, existing infrastructure. Let's see, youth beds at, at a, the proposed Livestream Mental Healthcare Campus. Livestream has committed to a certain number of beds, I don't have that number right off the top of my head, specifically for the, the treatment of adolescents, youth, kids, whatever you want to put in there. I'm not sure exactly what, what the term is, but they have committed to it. That's the only reason that Hernando County has come to the table, because they want to address mental healthcare. And, and kids, the kids that are being Baker-acted, that needs to be addressed, so that is, that has been very clear from the beginning. And let's see, I think that's all that I've got.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Bays?
Well, I would agree with my fellow Commissioner Kennard that I would like to see staff work with the Army Corps, let's try to find some resolution to the boat dock issue, and also address it for anything in the future. As far as the Baker Act, there's a lot to be said about that. My biggest concern is, is that Baker Act is not what I would classify as treatment. Baker Act is for a moment in time of not more than 72 hours, and the classic definition is if you are a threat to yourself or others. What we really need is, we need a facility in our county that can provide either post-care or front-care for someone that is experiencing some mental issues, that can help them get their life back on track and get it in order. That is what's needed in this county, which would then help negate the need for a Baker Act. I've said it before, I'll say it again, and I will continue my rant on it. Baker-acting somebody, whether they have Alzheimer's, dementia, I mean, if they're that confused, Baker-acting them is not going to do any good. If we're Baker-acting children, we are potentially ruining their future life. They can be prohibited from having certain jobs and careers in the future. It is problematic to think that we are using a Baker Act facility as a treatment. That is not what it's designed for. So I think, again, I want to address the issue is the $1 million is our contract with Livestream. That is not for the Baker Act facility, is strictly for their services. And then our transportation is provided by Livestream, not the Sheriff's Office. So there's a lot of confusion out there. There's a lot of misnomers being said. It is something that we're addressing. We're going to have a workshop on the 14th. I invite all of you to come back and do some homework on this. I can tell you, I, I've researched it pretty heavy. I have grave concerns about the level of service that's being delivered and what we're going to do with mental health, not just in this county, but across the state and across our nation. Inverness Village Four, I'm not sure what they're referring to today, but we've got to find. I, I'm begging, I'm begging for some resolution on this, and I don't know where it's going to come from, but we've got to figure out something on this, because it absolutely defies logic that we're giving permits, and we're building, and we have all these issues. And I know it's a big apple, but if we can start taking one bite of the apple at a time, let's try, try to find some resolve in this. Let's see. I agree, transportation, it is, I, I mean, we got a plate full of transportation issues. I mean, we heard earlier today, we ratified somebody to be head of our EOC. When you set at the stoplight at 44 and 491, that's an evacuation route. I don't know where they're going to go. You know, I will tell you, I've asked to be put on the agenda for a presentation that I've presented to FDOT, asking not because we have a MPO that we just look at two counties. Our problem is bigger than two counties. What is happening across our state, we have, you know, heat maps that show us, everybody is trying to avoid I-75. We have to take more of a global look at what is become, what's happening in our community and the people that are leaving 75 and coming through our county and using the Suncoast Parkway. And if you want to amplify that at a hurricane or some emergency event to that, we know from the last hurricane, we ended up with our shelters completely full of people that did not live in this county, full. That is only going to get worse, and we need to address emergency management. We need to address our transportation. We need to be able to pave the roads that we've got on the ground. We made an investment. People have bought here. They pay taxes. They deserve to have their roads paved. That is not even taking into account for the capacity that we need for the future growth and development of this county. I'll leave it at that, but that's my two cents for right now. The, the needs are big. The needs are huge, and I know we've got problems, and I think every one of us on this border working to take something we all have a passion for. We're working to address those. Please, we want to continue to hear from you. I do. That's, that's what I'm here for, and I want to hear from you, and we want to find resolve, and we want to be a good steward of our community and the good steward of our citizens. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Bays. Commissioner Davis?
Well, I guess I'll start with transportation to follow. Commissioner Bays, you said plateful. I think it's more like a banquet hallsworth, and it's not a tasty one. Not to make light of it, it is a very serious issue. We have not only residential roads, but we have all of our connector and feeder roads, and hey, four-laning Cardinal, that really needs to be done. So we do have a lot on our plate. I will also say specifically to Terry for IV4, obviously, I've put a lot of shoulder into that. I'm getting real, you know, I've been frustrated for as long as you've been frustrated, I think, although not to the level you have since you live there. I would say two things. In defense of staff, we've had a lot of turnover in the last three months, a lot of new faces, and we're trying to gel as a team. However, it's now been two or three months, and the holidays are past. It's time to get some resolution on this. And I really want fresh ideas and some serious teeth into some fixes for IV4. And everybody in the staff knows exactly who I'm referring to on all that. It's all of you that has anything to do with that. Livestream, we'll be voting later on doing a workshop. I think that that is absolutely the right way to go. And if you serve as a Commissioner longer than a few months, you will live to regret votes. That's enough I'm going to say about the last meeting. Let's see. Cardinal, I think I've covered everything except the dock. So that is absolutely unconscionable that the navigable portion of that canal has been blocked. Yes, I got the same briefing, that it followed our rules, but as any of us who have spent any time on the water knows that the deepest part is not always in the middle, and frequently it's not. So you guys really got the short end of the stick on that, and, let's see, Ms. Burns, you brought up an outstanding point. It's not just the enjoyment of living on the water, it's also a financial problem. If this doesn't get fixed, it's going to be hard to sell your house and go find a place to move, and that's going to be very expensive. So this has to get fixed. It absolutely has to get fixed and as soon as possible. So hopefully, that will be something that we can move with some speed on with the help of the Army Corps of Engineers. And one other comment about, I'm just going to keep throwing this statistic out here over and over again, in terms of everybody worried about growth. We're going to get our growth numbers in terms of what our tax rolls will be later this spring. Hopefully, those numbers will start helping to support some of the things that we need to take care of, but just remember about half of our, of the area of Citrus County can never be developed. And this is a, I, my family moved here in 1978, so, and it's, it's changed a bit. I now live in what used to be a giant watermelon patch in 1978, otherwise known as Citrus Hills. So I love this county, and I will do everything I can to make sure that we shape the growth that's coming to be, play nice with the Nature Coast routes that we have in small town. And that's all I got. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan, Finnegan, excuse me. Put a little extra syllable, syllable in there.
I think most everything's been touched on. I agree with Commissioner Kennard. I would mind taking another look if we have a problem with our permitting. I think that the county is responsible to take a look at that. Sounds like, I'm hoping help is on the way for the people of Water's Edge, but it seems like currently that's probably going to need to come from the Army Corps of Engineers. Livestream, Ms. Lipsick, I think I'm saying that right? I understand your fears. No one likes to, to hear that we may get an insane asylum, but I think in long history past, that's where people lived. This wouldn't be that, although we use the term Baker Act facility. We're looking for Livestream to provide a full continuum of care, but not a full-time living facility, as maybe your fears of, of history would prove. I do invite you to that March 14th presentation. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there, and Livestream would be the best people to clear that up. Let's see, Ms. Turk, I did ask Public Works, because you had questioned, you said you had a previous conversation about Cardinal Lane being four-laned. That is not in the plan at this time. There is no plans for four-laning that. And I think everybody else wrapped the other issues up, so thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so I appreciate you all coming out here today. I sympathize with Inverness Four. I sympathize with Kings Bay Dock. I was in red tape myself, my husband and I, for 10 years. So actually, it made me run for office, because I didn't want anybody to feel that powerless. And so the good news is, is you have five Commissioners that really, really care about your issues and making sure that they, we can get the best resolve that you can get. I'm a native Floridian. I'm a, I've seen it happen. I moved up here 28 years ago from Sarasota, so I understand growth and what can happen to a community if you don't plan. We, we approved on the agenda about having possible workshop for planning, just even for the Inverness Airport, and making sure that we take care of that. We only have so much land. As Commissioner Davis said, 50%, about 49, 50% of our water and land is protected, so we will never be a Sarasota, we'll never be a Miami, praise the Lord. But I do want to say, you know, as far as the permitting of a dock, I don't live on the water, but I, I know you all know this, that it's not just the staff doing the permits. You have many other state agencies involved there, and a lot of times with government, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing, and I'm sure staff is already looking into this. I do want to say it's easy to blame county staff, but we have some of the finest people working for us. And I am going to tell you that if they can only do what they can do, and, but I heard from each and every one of these Commissioners, we would- I heard from each and every one of these commissioners, we would like to look into it and see what we can do, because if I lived where you lived, and I couldn't get back to my house, that would be, God help that neighborhood. So, hey, I'm a mean Irish woman, and I'm gonna tell ya, God help 'em. So, um, you know, I, I know all of us will look into that. Um, the Baker Act facility. May fourteenth, I've asked for a workshop, we're gonna have a workshop, I would ask you to come back from Hernando, and please be there and give your input. Um, Baker acting children, as Commissioner Bays said, um, that does concern me as a mother, um, I, I know several, um, children, when my daughters were in high school, that got Baker acted, and that, that follows them. It, it, you know, it can stop them from joining the military. I mean, you know, when they're young and, you know, things are happening, and they don't know how to handle it. So, I, I, I'm very concerned about just, um, blanketing Baker acting people, um, dementia patients, Alzheimer patients should never be in the general popu- population of that, in that situation, so. I think the May fourteenth workshop is gonna help, it's gonna, uh, open, um, up some, a lot of discussions and how we're gonna handle this situation, but I know that all five of us agree. We have all voiced it, that we need a proper mental health facility in Citrus County. Uh, Inverness Villages Four, you, 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 you know, I've been out there, I, you know, I've already said it, I've been in red tape, and, um, I threw this out months ago, um, and it's not a, a, it's not a nice word. Um, but I'm gonna do it again, and, um, and sometimes a moratorium can just be a Band-Aid. And we might not be able to enforce it past a certain amount of time, but sometimes a moratorium stops some of the dysfunction that's going on in your neighborhood. And I'm just gonna put it out there again, that I think that we need to address what's happening out there and what's within our control. So, um, oh, I'm sorry, I said May fourteenth for the workshop, it's March fourteenth. Thank you, Commissioner Davis, uh, March fourteenth. Transportation, Agland, uh, we bought Agland when we bought, moved up here, because I want to hold on to a piece of Florida. Uh, don't plan on developing it, that will be something our daughters do. But if a developer goes and offers millions and millions of dollars to a farmer who's struggling, there's nothing we can do to stop them from, from selling that land. Um, I think what, um, Commissioner Simpson is, is doing is very important, and, um, I know that I went to the, uh, the Hall of Fame for the Ag banquet, and, um, a lot of farmers were talking about that. Generational farmers, six generations, so there's a lot of us that want to protect our Florida. And, um, but again, we can only do what we can do, so, appreciate that. Um, I think everybody else discussed, um, you know, the main thing is, is we need to plan what's happening to Citrus County. Uh, you know, we've been found, just look at my backyard at four eighty-six and four ninety-one, look what's happening right there in that corner. And, um, we've got a great staff, we have, I'm so thankful for this board up here. Uh, the experience that each and every one of these commissioners brings is going to help us, and we've got big things, and, uh, you know, addressing these developers and how they're gonna handle the traffic that they're gonna be bringing onto our streets. So, um, I know Commissioner Bays has brought it up, a transportation plan, I'm fully support that. Talking to Tallahassee, uh, some of these roads that are being forced on us. Um, they're also forcing traffic onto, um, our secondary roads, and we need to protect that also. So, thank you for coming here today, and I appreciate it, and I hope you continue to come. And that being said, we're gonna move on to the business of running the county. We're at item E, our regular business, which is bids.
Public hearings.
Open to the public, then goes to regular business? What are you saying?
You have a one thirty, a one thirty-five, a one forty, a one forty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Item H.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I mean, see, we had a time certain. Okay, what time is it?
Two fifteen.
Okay, H one, time certain, public hearing on ordinance pertaining to noise, vibration, and air pollution. A, B, A and B?
Yes, ma'am, I'll read the ordinance.
Thank you.
Commissioners, at the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida relating to noise, vibration, and air pollution, amending chapter twenty-one, article two, section twenty-one dash twenty-eight, entitled exemptions. Amending chapter twenty-one, article two, section twenty-one dash thirty-two, entitled enforcement. Providing for severability, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing. Providing for scrivener's errors, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Board, what is your pleasure?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Is there backup on this?
H one?
Yeah.
There's the ordinance. Want to see it?
There's no, yeah, there's no ordinance posted on the clerk's site. All I have is the a- agenda memo.
It's, uh, page seven eighty-two and seven eighty-three.
What I'm saying is that I don't get a book, it needs to be in the clerk's site, or I don't get to review it ahead of the vote. So. Was this red line?
No.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners? I'll make the motion.
Oh, we need to have a public hearing?
You gotta open the public hearing.
Sorry, thank you, um, are you, you're gonna continue to read that, Commissioner Davis?
I'm just speed reading while you do the public hearing.
At this time, if there's anyone that would like to come forward to speak about item H one, going once, going twice, okay? So, I am closing the public hearing part of this. Okay, now, commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve item H one, A and B.
Second? Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, jumped ahead of Commissioner, Commissioner Finnegan. And is there any? Is there anyone from the public?
Discussion?
Is there anyone from the public that would like to, okay, we already put it open to the public, so now, is there any further discussion? Board members? I'm very thankful for this. I know you worked very hard on it. I know there is a member in the audience that worked very hard for this, and I appreciate it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I understand that you helped move this process along, so I'm thinking. Just wanted to give you props, we're due, thank you.
Thank you. Year of my life, huh?
Brilliant, the way you did that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bays.
I would just like our Madam Attorney to, um, weigh in on what this pertains to exactly, because I think it will create some confusion within our community, that this is only on the waters in Homasasa.
It is definitely only on the waters in Homasasa. If you'll recall, several months back, you adopted a noise-sensitive zone uh, for the areas of the, uh, Blue Water of the Homasasa River. I'm not sure exact, I can't remember exactly what the section line is, but there's a designated area of the Homasasa that you applied a noise-sensitive zone to. Once we, uh, adopted that ordinance, F W C asked us to make a minor change. Uh, and that change is what you're seeing, and it's simply to make it extremely explicit, that it has nothing to do with muffler noises, so. I think with this change, we will finally have F W C's blessings, and, uh, your aquatics department will be able to move forward with getting the signs put up.
And, s- thank you, Commissioner Bays, I appreciate it. Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, I just wanted to make sure that it was very clear that this does not pertain to anything else other than that area.
And, um, I think that it's important to note that, um, this is enforceable now, and in this area, and that, um, as soon as we can get those signs up, the permits for the signs, that would help. Um, and I would like to be there when those signs go up.
I know that Mr. Edwards is working very diligently with, um, F W C. So, I'm sure just as soon as he's able to get those up, he will be out there, and I'm sure he hears you.
And Commissioner Finnegan, Commissioner Davis, would you like to say anything?
I think it's outstanding that this is finally going to come to fruition.
Thank you. Okay, that being said, I'd like to take a vote on H one, A and B. And I got a con- a motion made by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Finnegan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. That passes five zero. At this time, you can clap if you want.
I was gonna say.
Thank you, Alonda McCarty. Okay, so, moving on, the next public hearing is H two, Historic Preservation Ordinance. Ms. Lynn?
Thank you, ma'am. At the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, adding chapter one zero one, entitled Historic Preservation. Providing for purpose and intent, providing for definitions, creating a local register of historic places. Providing for historic site, structure, and district designation criteria. Providing for historic site, structure, and district designation procedures. Providing for regulation of construction, reconstruction, alteration, and demolition of historic sites and structures. Providing for state historic preservation officer. Providing for penalties for violations, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for codification and inclusion into the code. Providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. Um, just a bit of history for. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Ktu is here.
Please do.
Just a bit of background, um, the board had passed, uh, several provisions relating to historic preservation, the creation of the Historic Preservation, uh, Board, um, and those, uh, various ordinances were never incorporated into the, the codification of the Code of Ordinances. So, while we are making some changes, which I'm assuming Ms. Ktu is gonna discuss with you, just as a kind of historical background, uh, we are getting these things codified, so that, uh, anyone can find them uh, in our Code of Ordinances, rather than having to search for them, so.
Thank you. Ms. Ktu?
And I was gonna suggest if maybe we could discuss H three at the same time, they are related, we're past their time, um, obviously separate motions, but if we could do that, it might save a little bit of time.
I'm fine with that, Board, are you okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, I'll go ahead and read that second ordinance. Uh, we we need to, um,
we can't do that, okay, trying to save time.
I, and I, and I appreciate that, but, um, just because we're, their ordinance adoptions, we need to have two separate public hearings. But you can talk about them both at the same time.
I will do that, that's fine. Um, Ms. Lynn summarized it very well, this was not codified, um, previous boards have adopted this. Our Historical Resources Advisory Board has seen this language, um, the only thing that's changing in here, um, the one change, and it's actually in H three and not in H two, is the number of people on Historic Resources Advisory Board. They are few, but they are very passionate, and they're having some problems with quorums, because there aren't a lot of members. So, what this does is change it from nine members to five regular members and two alternate members. Don't have that many right now, but hopefully they can find enough people to do that. So, that's one change. The other change is, instead of requiring four yearly meet- meetings, they have meetings as necessary. They don't always need to meet four times a year, sometimes they do, so, those are the two main changes, besides putting this in the code.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public at this time that would like to speak about H two? Thank you, sir. Please give us your name and where you're from. When you get up to the podium and fill out a green card, please, for the.
Good afternoon, my name is Paul Granon, I'm fifth generation Lake Anto, Florida. I am a trustee of the Magnolia Cemetery in Lake Anto. I'm the president of the Christopher Vantology Guild, and I'm the newest member of the advisory board for Citrus County. I know where the bodies are, who shot them, and why. I wanna make sure, I wanna welcome everybody to Citrus County, 'cause I was here when you got here. And I'm ready to get to work and do something with this advisory board and the preservation of Citrus County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Mr. Granon, will you please fill out a card? Thank you, is there anyone else that would like to speak on H two? Thank you, I'm gonna close the public comment at this time. Commissioners, is there any other board discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve item H two, A and B.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any other comments at this time? So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. H three, Historic Resources Advisory Board, Ms. Lynn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board, at the conclusion of this public hearing, you're gonna be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, amending chapter one oh one, Historic Preservation, by adding section entitled Citrus County Historical Resources Advisory Board. Providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for codification and inclusion in the code. Providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to H three? Good, Mr. Granon? Thank you. Okay, at this time, seeing none, I will close the public portion of this.
Madam Chair, motion to approve H three, A and B.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Bays, a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further public board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That passes five zero. Thank you, Ms. Ktu. H four. H four, public hearing on street vaca- vacation. Two, one, dash, zero, one, Commissioner, I mean, Attorney Lynn?
Yes, ma'am, this is the one that we're asking be moved to, uh, March twentieth for the public hearing, there was, um,
Oh, yes.
It had to be re-noticed.
Thank you. Okay, so, moving along. So, now we are at regular business, if I.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve item E one, A through J.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Davis. Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing none, any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That passes five zero. Thank you. E two. We are at E two, Board.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve E two, with noting that the budget transfer for the T D C um, has been removed.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a com- uh, motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment on E two? Seeing none, is there any further?
Can I request clarification? Earlier, you had said V C B, is it T D C or V C B?
I said T D C, I corrected myself the first time, and I think.
She said T D C.
Yes, she's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any further board comment?
Madam Chair, if I'm, I'm sorry, uh, just for completely, complete clarification on, um, it's page five twelve in your agenda packet, it talks about tourism and visitors in convention bureau, so, just, so we're completely clear what we're talking about.
Madam Chair, I can amend that motion, although we are talking about the T D C. On page five twelve, it says visitors in convention bureau, and just note that that has been removed.
Thank you, so we, uh, I have, and Commissioner Kennard, do you agree with that?
I'll modify it second.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further comment? Nothing from staff? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That passes five zero. E three.
Chair.
We're gonna have that kind of relationship today.
Yeah.
Um, the playback, I heard that.
Um, the playback, I heard that, um, Commissioner Kennard under the bids said J. And it was actually only through I, so I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Well, you know, I delayed during that, but, uh, you didn't speak up, so I thought he was correct. We need to correct that. On the regular business, um, E one A through I.
A through I, yes.
And that was a, um, Commissioner Kennard made the motion, and who made the second?
I did, I believe.
Okay, so you modify yours also, please. Thank you, and is that? Yes? Commissioner Attorney?
Why don't we just redo it? Just so everyone's clear.
I'm looking for a motion to accept the, approve the bids, E one A through I.
Madam Chair, motion to approve item E one A through I.
Thank you, any public comment on that? Seeing none, any further board comment? All in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay, that passes five zero. Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. Okay, now where am I at? E three, thank you. E three, board, I am looking for direction from you for E three Budget Resolutions.
Motion to approve E three.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment regarding E three? Seeing none, is there any further board discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay, that passes five zero. E four, Inter-Facility Transport Agreement for Citrus HMALLC, doing business as Rivera Health Seven Rivers Hospital. Board, I am looking for a motion for E four.
Motion to approve item E four.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Bayes, is there any public comment? Seeing none, any further board comment? All in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay, we have a four zero right now. E five. Waste Disposal Account Agreement for Bentley Waste Services LLC, doing business as Hook Company, A and B. Board, what is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve E five, A and B.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any further board comment? All in favor say aye. Opposed? We are at four zero right now. E six Core Civic Contract Monitoring Update for January twenty twenty-three. Now, um, last we looked at this, staff was meeting with, um, the consultant. Are we still in discussions, is that still ongoing?
That is still ongoing.
So I am looking for a motion for E six, and then E six A.
Motion to approve E six.
Okay, um, Madam Attorney, where's E six A, is that a separate? Oh, thank you. Okay, that's a backup. So do we need a motion for E six and E six A, or just?
I believe that was just part of the backup. Isn't, is there a?
Okay. Just making sure. Um, Commissioner Davis, how do you vote on E four and E five?
Aye and aye.
Do you have that, thank you. Need that Jeopardy music.
Yes, it's just, it's just updating the amount of the assessment, so it's, it's.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, I'm looking for a second. I have a second by Commissioner Finnegan, is there any public comment on E six? Seeing none, um, any further board discussion? None, all in favor? Opposed, say nay, passes five zero. E seven, release of retainage ITB twenty-one dash zero five two Essex Avenue, Stephen Street and Scenic Way Water Main Extensions.
Motion to approve E seven?
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan, and I heard Commissioner Bayes first, is there any public comment on E seven? Seeing none, any further board comment? All in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay, that passes five zero. E eight, Alaska Street Water Main, we need to approve and authorize a clerk to place an accept- acceptance stamp and release of lien bill of sale.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E eight.
Thank you, Commissioner Bayes. Second by Commissioner Kennard, I heard him, is there any public comment on E eight? Seeing none, is there any further board discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay, that passes five zero. E nine, public official bonds for commissioners, approve and off- authorize the commissioners to execute public official bonds in the amount of two thousand dollars each for Commissioner Finnegan and Commissioner Bayes. I'm looking for a motion. Commissioner Kennard, and I got second by Commissioner Davis, is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any further board discussion? I'm glad you guys are getting bonded, and all in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay, that passes five zero. E ten, Small County Outreach Program Agreement, SCOP, FPN four four one zero nine five for milling and resurfacing Withel Kuchi Trail, County Road thirty-nine from Tasha to Scott, I have A and B, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve item E ten A and B.
Second, Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan, is there any public comment? I was just thinking of Ms. Janet saying I love SCOP. Um, I love SCOP money, Commissioner Bayes?
I would love to hear from Ms. Jensen, I guess. Um, I think it's worthy to note the SCOP program and, um, how we qualify for it, how they decide, and what's going to happen. We don't qualify for it anymore.
Ms. Rodriguez, are you okay with that? Ms. Jensen, welcome.
Cause I know Mike Wright is writing about it.
Oh, boy. Mary Jensen, Public Works Director, so SCOP is based on population, and we get funds from the state per our population, so it's the Small County Outreach Program is where our funding comes from. And so if you get to a certain population size, then you're no longer eligible for SCOP. Um, I think the there's been discussions in the MPO and others about that we probably might wanna set aside some money to make sure that these SCOP roads, four eighty-six, gets funded when we reach a certain population size, because we will not receive SCOP funding once we've reached that population size, so. Every, everything costs money, and, um, that's kind of the long term of it. But yeah, we're very grateful for the state and the funding, and, um, it's a split that we get from, from them, and it, it works every year. We, we get a certain amount, it's based on basically what the state gets and how much they have for the counties to allow, it's not always a set amount. Um, but it's a fantastic program right now.
So it is fair to say, as in District seven, we are the only county in District seven that qualifies?
As far as population, I'm learning my districts, but I did have a meeting yesterday at F dot, and I believe you are correct in saying that.
And so when you pick roads, um, what is your criteria on which roads get picked?
We use the same criteria, uh, for SCOP roads as our residential roads. And so it's basically worst to first, so we look at our roads and which is the, the worst roads. We have a lot of SCOP roads that are big collector roads. Um, obviously, we don't base it on density, um, obviously, cause, uh, but we do ba- uh, base it on condition. So we rate them all, they're all rated, and we have a big SCOP map, it's in, in the engineering department, uh, next to Charles's desk. And it just tells all the SCOP roads, and when each one, we, it's a five-year plan, um, so we, we plan them five years in advance, and we get them on the list. And, um, it, it's just worst roads to first, is, is how we do our SCOP, SCOP program.
How many center line, do I, maybe you don't know, how, do you know how many center line?
This year?
That we have for that fits into the SCOP?
I would have to get back, back to you on that, I don't have that off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And I'm just curious that in the next five years, we see what's happening. So our plan for the next five years, is it fairly aggressive? Um, letting us know how much, you know, how much we need to put aside?
So currently, we don't put any money aside for these SCOP roads. Um, we've had discussions, Walt and I and Charles, we've had discussions that that's one of the things we probably need to discuss with the board and, and with, uh, Steve and others to say, other than, you know, we have our MPO projects, which we need to start putting money away, and we started those discussions with Erin, um, at OMB, that, you know, we had a, a meeting a couple of weeks ago and said, you know, we probably need to start putting money, that's another thing we'll discuss with Erin as far as SCOP money. Um, the good news is, is probably the SCOP program, the population will increase in that, it'll go probably above two hundred thousand. But there will be that cap that one day, the money probably will dry up. I, I'm not a fortune teller, I don't know when, but I believe it will go away someday, but we're very thankful for it right now, and we do qualify. Um, we have quite a buffer of forty thousand before we, we reach that top, but population-wise.
Thank you. Is there any other questions, board? Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay, so, uh, we had public comment, we had board discussion, is there anything else, board, you'd like to say? Okay, all in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay, that passes five zero. E eleven, which is also Small County Outreach Program Assis- Assistant Agreement, SCOP, FPN four four three four one one for milling and resurfacing. Trail ends from Wymer Trail to Withlopka Drive, A and B, board?
Madam Chair, move approval of E eleven, A and B.
Thank you, I have a motion by Commissioner Bayes, second by Commissioner Davis, is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any further board discussion on E, E eleven? All in favor? Opposed? That passes five zero. E twelve. Okay, E twelve, the airport.
Didn't we pull that one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. Uh, what I said on E twelve is that I wanna have staff bring it back as part of a comprehensive plan and, uh, possible, um, workshop, so. Staff heard that, so E thirteen. Inverness Airport Business Industrial Park DEO Grant Amendment two, A and B. Approve and authorize the chairman to execute amendment number two to the DEO agreement number HL one four one. And B, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the budget resolution. I'm bored, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve E thirteen, A and B.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay, that passes five zero. E fourteen, Inverness Airport FBBO List of Improvements. Okay, board, I'm looking for.
Um, we're just discussing, we're not voting, correct? Cause I, I can give a little background on this if you like.
Staff is gonna need direction on the items that you want to move forward.
So, yes, you're correct, we're, we're looking for, um, direction for staff.
So, may I?
Yes, please.
So I first heard about the Chrisa funding, you know, gosh, this must have been eighteen months ago, a year ago, something like that. I'd be very interested to know if there is a deadline, that that has to be encumbered or spent. But otherwise, and thank you, Mr. Chan, for finally getting your list in, and boys at a whopper, lot bigger than thirteen thousand. But this goes to a point that, you know, a lot of folks know, I basically grew up at Christopher River Airport. And it was our, Madam Chair, who had to point out, it's so funny, you get blind to your own reality, and at our very first board retreat, she pointed out that our two airports are the gateway to a lot of wealthy people coming into the fan- into the county, and so they need to, they need some sprucing up. So we do own, the county does own both properties, um, we have two different companies that manage them under lease. Um, and we do get a portion of those profits, so that would come back to the county. So I, Madam Chair, I would like to see this, I would like to see an airport, um, workshop. I think that's an excellent idea, and both of these should probably move forward to that, both this item and the next one. The only one that I would say that maybe we need to fast-track is certainly number one on Inverness, the airport signage. And, um, there's a couple of things on Christopher River's list that we can probably fast-track without impeding a master plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan?
Uh, for discussion, I asked staff, and the airport signage, um, they said would be in the budget for next year. So I was thinking, since there's thirteen thousand dollars doesn't go very far these days, I love looking at number six, Workforce Development WTC Mechanic Program. Um, if we, obviously, a, a lot of these things cost a lot more money, but I would like to see what we could do for the thirteen thousand that would not only, uh, solve the list, one thing on the list that Mr. Chan has offered, but also, um, our youth or other individuals that's interested in staying employed here in Citrus County and using our local technical college.
Thank you. Commissioner Bayes?
Well, I'm a little perplexed by how this all went down, because I've had several meetings, um, regarding the airport. And I do know that it is up for a master plan review in twenty twenty-five, I believe. Um, if, if we're gonna bring this back, I would like to ask, you know, to have consideration that we do this on a relatively short basis, because we have some grants sitting out there, um, and, and the, um, construction that's, that we voted on earlier, I believe, to go through. And I think that this is very indicative of what we talked about, um, when we hired an Economic Development Director. This is gonna be a great opportunity, that we can either be a public-private partnership, or this board's gonna have to decide if we're going to be in the business and do it ourselves. And that's where we're at, and, uh, I don't think that there's been much of an appetite. I mean, I've asked staff to run some numbers, I believe that it was provided all to you, on tea hangers, box hangers, corporate hangers, and, uh, as you look at those numbers, I hope that you also honed in on the idea that the numbers on the county side did not include the cost of money. Um, so, uh, you know, when we do these sort of things, you've gotta take into account uh, a private investor that's gonna come in, they that is not something they're gonna go to the bank and get financing for. It's gonna be private equity money, they're gonna come in, they're gonna make their investment in it, and there has to be a return on it at the end of the day, and that's some of the calculations that I asked for, that's what you have in, in your backup that was emailed to you. I think there's great opportunities at the Inverness Airport that we, you know, it's, uh, and basically an eighty acre park, you know, we can do some great things with it, working on some stuff at the moment, um. But again, this board's gonna have to decide, you know, and, and, and I think it's gonna be another component of it, that we're gonna have to know exactly what is it that we can afford to invest, and are we willing to bond money to do, to make an investment in this? So that's the only thing I'm gonna say. So, that's the only thing I'm gonna say, that be very cognizant of the fact, when you're going down this. Track, that you have to consider if you're going to be the investor, or you're gonna have private equity dollars in it. And that's how, a lot of this stuff has been built across, in the county, at the two airports, it's been private dollars. Because once they build these hangers, they sign a lease with the county, the county becomes the owner. And they're not, there's no bank that's going to lend on that. So, I, I'm asking for the Board just to consider all of this, is if you're gonna bring it back in a master plan, and we're gonna look at it. Know that that's what you're asking for the investment.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis?
Very well said, Commissioner Bayes, I asked for the same figures, for the same reason, this Board needs to make a decision as to whether we're in the business of. Renting, building and renting hangers, or if we're in the business of doing public-private partnerships. And I'm open to the discussion either way, but Commissioner Bayes brings up the same concerns that I had. So, but I would also add one thing to that discussion. And that is, um, from a, I look at everything from the consumer point of view, cause that's my career. And I don't think having multiple entities. Managing the hangers for, that are for rent is very good for the people who are looking for a hanger to rent for their airplane. So, right now, we have T-hangers that are managed by FBOs, we have T-hangers that are managed by the county. And that's two different lists that you have to get on, and they're not, the right hand doesn't talk to the left hand, and vice versa. So, that can be very frustrating from a consumer standpoint, and I would really like to see one entity, whether it be the FBO or the county, in the business. Of renting hangers. Theoretically, it should be the FBOs at the two airports that do it. Because they're on-site, and that's the most obvious place to call, if you're a pilot, looking for a hanger.
Thank you. Commissioner Canard? I just wanna, um, ask Commissioner Bayes, um, if I'm hearing you right, you, what, what are you saying, you were asking? Cause you kinda circled around a little bit, I just want you to clarify, are you saying that you, in the workshop, you wanna discuss? The county being in control, or?
Well, I'm not sure why this got pulled, so, um, you know, on there today, there was some lease options. And when you look at leases for either, um. And, and we have Mr. Doty out here, that's, you know, has asked to build three hangers. So, he's making his investment, the day that he signs the lease, he's basically taking his. Whatever, I don't know if it's gonna be four hundred thousand, average, um, and he's basically assigning that over to the county. For ownership, because you become the owner. If you decide that you're not going to do that, are you going, is the county gonna be the investor, or you gonna go out, I mean, where's the money gonna come from to make the investment? That's, that's my point. Yeah, so I think, I mean, we have got, I, I think we have a great opportunity at the Inverness Airport to do a lot of things. But. We've had a plan in place, and we keep kicking this can, and, and either we're going to just. Be a hobby airport. For more le- for lack of better words, or we're gonna make a true investment. And I think there's room for both, but we have currently, um, we have some funds sitting out there, I think there's a, a five million dollar. Grant application in at DEO for the, with the Coochie Tech, and Andy Help Me Out, I, I, you know, where we could have a school. He's, you know, the FBO has secured some, his own private financing. So, we have, you know, the conversation has to be bigger, we have to decide who we're gonna be when we grow up, and what we're really willing to invest. And I can tell you, the laundry list is long of things of wish list, and the first and foremost on my list. Is roads, we have got to pave these roads. We know it costs twenty-two million dollars a year to repave the roads on, on the cycle. So, we've already made that investment into our community, and we have an obligation to the taxpayer that live on these roads, that drive to their houses every day. To pave those roads. I, we have not had the conversation, it's what we asked for in our workshop, I know it's coming up. But we've gotta get very serious about the budget and talk about, you know, what is our bonding capability? We have places in our county that, um, ISO ratings for their homeowners is now a nine and a ten, because we don't have a fire station in a location. The, the list is gigantic, and we have got, we have really got to start boiling this whole thing down.
Thank you, absolutely, I'm the reason, I pulled this, because nothing for nothing, Mr. Doty, appreciate what you're wanting to invest. But I feel at this point, you're saying we have a plan and we're kicking it down the road, for two years, I've been on this Board. And I've been talking about the Inverness Airport, and. There's no kicking it down, we don't know what we want from the Inverness Airport, and if we tie all this airport land up. With, with people building their own hangers, and having fifty-year leases, or thirty-five-year leases. Then we have somebody that wants to come in and, and, uh, manufacturing to the Inverness Airport Park. Which I would encourage that we figure out what we want from our airports. We only have so much land, and going the way we're going now, I feel it's hodgepodge, I feel it's, it's first come, first served. And that is not what we want, that's not what I wanna see out of our airports. I wanna see a real plan for the future, and I also would like to know, if we let. Anybody, you know, we have the hu- a hobby, you're gonna, you call it a hobby airport. And we have somebody that comes in and says, I wanna make an investment, that's what's gonna get our roads paved, is those businesses. Right now, we're saying we need to figure out how to get our roads paved, but we have to look at our tax base. And this airport, which I've said for two and a half years, is an opportunity for Citrus County. So, I wanted, I would like to have a workshop, I wanna see what we wanna be, and what we want from our airports. I think we, I think, um, Commissioner Davis made a great point, that the FB, FBOs are either in charge of the hangers. Or there's a, a number of different, um, hanger owners, or, you know, that, that leased this out for fifty years. Tying up land for fifty years, I, I don't think that's a good business decision. So, that's what I wanna discuss, and I, I'd be curious to see what, um, comes out of this workshop, and, um. That's, that's my thoughts on it, um, I think that I also, on this, this wish list, um. I'm a little con- concerned about the camping area for tur- tourists, you know. You know, my father was a captain at Sarasota Bradenton Airport in the sixties and seventies, I watched that airport grow. I watched them buy out a neighborhood to expand the Sarasota Bradenton Airport, um, it's now an international airport, but, um. You know, there's security procedures, and that, that does kinda concern me on your wish list, I'd like to hear more about that. And that's exactly why I planned, I pulled this, because there's, there's more questions for me than there are answers. And there's only, uh, thirteen thousand dollars for all this, so, that's where I'm at, so, um, is there any other board discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finnegan.
I just wanna say, I was happy that you pulled that, because I have many of the same questions, and it's, you know, we have a contract right now. And the rents are very reasonable, but we're making a huge investment to the Inverness Airport, and that's county money. And now we have a, an Economic Development Director, and I would love to hear what he has to say at that workshop. Because although we're charging these private people, um. A certain amount of rent now, because they are making the investment, so the rent would be fairly low, in the future. That a, amount of rent they're able to collect will go up drastically, because we have a whole business industrial park there. So, I think we, um, aren't kicking the can down, I think we're, we're looking to the future, not what we have now. But what are we gonna have years from now, and I think the taxpayers, we owe that to them, to use our staff. To try to forecast to see what's best, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Commissioner Davis?
When can we get it scheduled?
We'll work on it, um, soon, soon.
As soon as possible.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Commissioner Davis, I think, asked a question, because we are, we are supposed to be talking about the thirteen thousand dollars. You asked a question about how fast do we have to spend it?
So, Erin, can you answer that question?
So, technically, the Chrisa money, the grant money, was used for eligible expenses. So, the Chrisa money was used, completed, closed out. We just in turn took that money that we already had budgeted for those expenses, and left it in the account, so, we're good.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, and, and thi- this is, this agenda item is kind of a little vague, because it says, you know, this is the wish list, there's no amounts on it. You know, I, I like the idea of, um, the workforce development, but, I, I mean, I, I ha- I like the idea of the parallel grass runway for tailwind, tailwheel and glider operations, but. There's no price, so, I mean, what are we discussing?
If you don't mind, I'll ask Mary to come up and kinda discuss that with you, and give you an idea of what items we can do for the thirteen thousand dollars.
So, um, as far as the Inverness Airport in the list, um, talked to a few of you. Commissioner Finnegan is correct, um, the improved airport signage is in the budget for next year, so we'll have that, uh, one done. Um, as far as the hundred T-hangers and ten corporate hangers, that's kind of the, looking at the master plan. And a, a corporate hanger could be a million dollars apiece, it just depends on what, uh, the price is in the, the T-hangers. Uh, we do them usually in about sixteen blocks, and that's about three million. The plan for financial incentive packages for business park, that one I would have to look into, that one, to me, is, um. It could vary depending on what the financial incentives are, so I don't have an answer to that one. Complete the business park, we did, we have the five point three million dollars, um, for the, the current base bid that we're doing. And then we've also applied for a nine million dollar grant, so, uh, that is nine million plus the, the five point, I think it's five point six three total for it. Uh, so that one will hopefully be completed, once we get the nine million dollar grant. Uh, workforce development, of course, the mechanic program, and the hanger for the WT, the hanger would be a lot more expensive. The workforce development program, I would have to work with one of the schools, or the trade schools for that. Um, the parallel grass runway, I, I thought that that was a gimme, I thought that was a pretty easy one, I've been told it's about two million dollars. So, I did sit down and talk to Quincy about that, and he told me that it's a lot more than what you think it is, so that one is, is huge. Um, the affordable apartments, we were told that there is a private investor behind the airport. That actually wants to develop housing for them, so that one actually may come to fruition without the county having to do that, so that's kind of exciting. The Green Airport, um, we are talking to Duke, we have talked to Duke about this, uh, Carl and I have con- conversations with them. And, uh, I think the, the provider out there is CECO, I believe. However, Duke is very interested to run us power if we wanna do that, so. That, that is in, in the phase of, we're discussing, we'll have to discuss with CECO and things like that, but I believe we do have. Some, I believe we do have, uh, don't you have a charger there already at Inverness? This is a much bigger project, yeah, so we do have, have one out there. Um, and then camping area for, I believe, instead of tourists, it'd probably be more like pilots. So, the camping area, we could do probably a lot easier, because it's a level ground, but we would have to think about what that entails, is this just tent camping, or what? So, a lot of these, I think the camping area, um, and number, number four, six, seven, and eleven, we could probably do something with. You know, the ten thousand dollar budget, planning, looking into, staff working on, um, the camping area, we might even be able to get done. But it just depends on how big we're talking about this, is it just a porta potty, and just tent camping in a set-aside area, so. So, that's kind of, you have huge things off the charts, millions of dollars, and then you have little things, so I think about, you know, only four of them, we could actually get done for Inverness. Um, if we turn to Crystal River, uh, we could do the canopy for the nineteen thousand, and, uh, the security camera. We could do those two things on that list.
Okay, thank you, Mary, so Board, um, what direction would you like to give the staff? Because, like she said, four, six, seven, eleven, I'm not ve- really comfortable right now with eleven, I am. You know, o- obviously, I have a security company, and I'm a little concerned about security and, uh. You know, airports that were, you know. Try not to say too much, but, you know, it is, it can be vulnerable, and, and put us in a world of trouble, that we don't wanna be in, so, um. I know you think about that a lot, and, uh, so I'm, I'm not right now real keen on eleven. But, uh, the staff is looking for directions, so.
Madam Chair? I'd like to make a motion that we would work on the airport signage.
Okay, that is in the budget, but you would like to work on it faster than that?
Yes, and make it. Maybe better. And that is the face. When you come into that airport.
Yeah, I, I'm kinda surprised by the wish list, because I did bring this up two and a half years ago, that when you go into these airports. I said it, it is a gateway for visitors, I, I, I don't, I, I think not everybody is wealthy. And it is a tremendous amount of, of visitors that are coming through there, and our first impression on either airport isn't, um. Exactly, I think, what we would wanna project, and none of that is on here, and I don't know that it's on Crystal Rivers either. So, um, not opposed to the signage, and using that money from the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Is the, and putting that somewhere else, maybe, what do you think, Board?
Madam Chair? There's two different things that we're talking about, I think, one is the inexpensive signage that the county sign department can do, think. You know, F dot type signs, which I think is an immediate need, he's nodding, yes? Okay, so we're talking about a monument sign, I believe, which was more of a front door. And, um, speaking, putting my professional hat on here. The best, most cost-effective way to do this is to have something that, um, Ms. Campshaw has been. Working on, which is, um, looking at our county seal, and making it a easier to deal with logo. And then designing that monument sign that'll end up going all over the county, with the new tagline, where nature and community thrive. So, if we could fast-track those things, I think she may even have some leftover budget to do that. Then I think that that would go a long way towards setting a tone for the county, so. Cause monument signs aren't inexpensive, it'd be nice to do it right, do it once. And let Inverness be one of the earliest installations.
I appreciate that, I mean, honestly, I mean. Trying to find a nice way to say this, I mean, when, our entrance to this airport is going by an old dump. And a very rundown fifty-year-old animal shelter, and that is the reason why I started on that whole animal shelter thing. Was so that, moving the animal shelter, so that we could maybe expand the airport, and make a, uh. A better statement going to an industrial park, so, um. You know, as far as I'm concerned, we're just. Without a real plan, I don't know, I mean, what, what we're gonna do with thirteen thousand, so I'm gonna let. The Board give direction to the staff, because I think there's so many other problems that we need to address, just even.
Madam Chair, let me withdraw my motion, and let's just bring it all back.
Okay, thank you.
Madam?
Yes.
If we're just giving direction, I think Commissioner Bayes had a good idea, she wants to fast-track that, it doesn't hurt for them to get prices on signs if they're coming back. Um, and if we are looking at Crystal River signs also, I would ju- Um, and if we are looking at Crystal River signs also, I would just say maybe their item number three, um, a security camera, we might wanna carve out that money before looking, putting the rest towards a sign, it seems like a security camera would be fairly important.
Okay, so is the Board, um, or can we get a consensus that you want to, um, go with Commissioner Bays' recommendation to look at the air- airport signage?
Sure.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We're gonna workshop this, I think it's a great idea to table it for now, and let's, let's have this conversation. We're talking an awful lot about what to do with thirteen thousand dollars, and we're looking at a list of projects that's mil- that, that are millions.
Absolutely.
Uh, a monument sign, uh, you know, of course, depending on the size of the thing, you could, it could be, you know, well into thirty, forty, sixty, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars. Uh, so the thirteen thousand doesn't really even get us started. Uh, so we've got, obviously, there's a lot of ideas about our airports, I think we table it for now and bring it back in a workshop.
So the direction for the staff is we need to workshop as soon as possible, and, uh, let, let's figure this out. So, um, then we're gonna move on to E sixteen, Crystal River. Oh, E fifteen, excuse me, Crystal River, um, same situation. We, this is a discussion, we're not looking for a motion, just to advise staff on how to proceed.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would agree with, um, Commissioner Finnegan that, uh, security camera is not part of a master plan, it sounds like something that we ought to just direct staff to take care of it.
I agree with that. Commissioner Bays?
Yep, I'm fine with that.
So we spent thirteen hundred twenty-one dollars of the twenty-three thousand, if you can move forward on that. I feel like Band-Aids, is there anything else that the Board would like to discuss about E fifteen?
Do we have to vote on it?
No, just discussion.
I think the canopy is certainly due bare replacing, but I would like to look at the total plan for that airport in the workshop, so.
Okay, so, Board Direction is move on number three. Madam Attorney?
I think the, uh, the spending, the thirteen hundred is within anybody's, uh, spending authority, so I don't think the Board has to make a motion on that.
Thank you. Anything else on E fifteen?
No, ma'am.
Okay, moving on to E sixteen. Addendum number two to contract, three, four, zero, six, North Tor- Turkey Oak Drive, Crystal River. This is the Betts Farm property, and this is housekeeping, correct, Madam Attorney?
You all gave direction at the last Board, this is just, uh, bringing forward the contract.
So I'm looking for a motion on E sixteen, A, B, C, and D.
Motion to approve, item E sixteen, A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Can- Canard, and second by Commissioner Davis, is there any public comment on E sixteen? Seeing none, any further Board discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bays.
I would like this to be added, um, at, at least to have an update once a month from Mr. Ashitari, just as to the status of how he's coming along. Were you gonna ask for an update?
That's why I just said.
Today? I, I thought you had.
I have an update.
Okay, so staff will, okay, thank you. Okay, we've had public comment, Board discussion, all in favor of E sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, that passes five zero. E seventeen, development agreement for Cardinal Farms, B O C C accept to consider the request for consideration of a development agreement with Cardinal Farms.
Motion to approve, item E seventeen.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Canard, second by Commissioner Davis, is there any public comment on E seventeen?
My name is Lynn Turk, and once again, I have to say that to even consider going ahead with anything on Cardinal Street at this time, when there's no plan to increase the size of Cardinal, is foolish. It's just foolish, why go ahead and, and look into having a, a Cardinal Farm, or whatever it's being called? It, it doesn't make any sense to go ahead and look into building out there when you're not going to fix that road. That road's a death trap now, I mean, people out there biking or walking, there, there's no shoulder. There's, there's no path, there's nothing, it's a two-lane road, two duallys can barely go by each other on that road. So to plan a hundred and fifty acre with a hotel and whatever is absurd at this point. I think we have to have a road plan first, and then go ahead with development. Develop, I, I have no problem with development as long as there's gonna be a road, but right now, to put anything else out there is insane, thank you.
Anyone else? I'm gonna close public comment, Board, is, you have any comment?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
I would just say that her point is very well taken, and we need to make sure that we have a plan to forlay in that with some sort of utility path for that big of a development, so, point well taken, but this is just the first step.
Right. And, and I agree, I mean, we've had twenty years to prepare for this. You know, this is a new Board, Commissioner Canard's the oldest one up here, and.
No, I think I'm the oldest.
But, uh, you know, th- this is why it's so important to plan, and it's, as a business owner, it's so logical. But, uh, you know, the previous Board, and I believe it was actually Commissioner Bays' Board, who had the foresight to widen four eighty-six when there was really nothing there, and ready, it's ready. And, uh, I brought up Cardinal in two thousand eighteen, and they're like, ah, ah. So, um, I think that we need to really dig into this, and if this is something, I mean, we can't necessarily stop a developer from doing something on their land, that as long as it's within code and within the zoning, but we have to figure out, uh, the, uh, side effects, so, um, thank you, point well taken, and I believe that's, this is on the minds of all of us. So, um, and I know staff is hearing what we're saying. So I have, um, a motion by Commissioner Canard, a second by Commissioner Davis, we've had public comment, is there any other Board discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, that passes five zero. F one, outstanding items. Commissioners, um, is there any updates on this list, any, uh, completions, deletions, Ms. Rodriguez?
We have no updates.
Okay, so I am, if there's no updates to this list, I'm looking for a motion? No?
No updates, just informational.
Just informational.
This is just informational, okay, so there's no updates, we don't have to make a motion. Is there any Board discussion? Okay, very good, moving on, G, County Assistant Administrator, Maricel Rodriguez.
So G one is the reorganization of Public Works, the Engineering Division, um, this will change the division name and some staff titles, the division will change from Engineering Division to Technical Services Division, and, um, some of the staff titles will change, also those that have the engineering title will be changed to other titles to make sure we're, um, following state statute.
Okay, very good, um, this, I had put down G three, but it's, uh, G one. Okay, so Board, um.
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair, to approve G one.
Thank you. Vote by, uh, motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Canard, is there any public comment on the reorganizational chart? Seeing none, any Board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, G two. We have handled G three, Citrus County Elected Community Leadership Summit. Maricel?
Yes, this is A to direct staff to coordinate the community elected leadership summit for March twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, from nine AM to one PM at the La Canto Government Building, and B, approve use of purchasing car not to exceed five hundred dollars, and C would be to approve the related budget transfer.
Very good, Board?
Motion to approve, item G three, A, B, and C.
Second.
And a motion by Commissioner Canard, second by Commissioner Davis, is there any public input on G three? Seeing none, is there any further Board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, so then we need to go back to B nine. Okay, this is a, um, resolution, uh, from staff to sign and permit applications, inspections, reports on behalf of the county, and, um, let me go here. And order here. Okay, so we need to a- adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the resolutions and then fix the titles, so we're good on this? We, do we need a, a vote on this?
You, you would need a vote, right, there, some of the titles are incorrect on that because it was prepared before the reorganization. Now with the reorganization, it would just be a matter of, uh, fixing the few titles to make them consistent with the new org chart.
Okay, so Board, I'm looking for a motion to approve B nine with the corrections.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bays, and a second by Commissioner Finnegan, is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any further Board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, B nine passes five zero. Okay. See where I'm at now. You know, it would be nice if my agenda had numbers on it also, that would be helpful. Where am I at?
You're on aye, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All this bouncing around, okay, Advisory Board, we have nothing for aye, committee reports.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Commissioner Canard, would you like to start?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Bays.
Um, the only thing I want to say is, ooh, we're having the Strawberry Festival again this weekend, um, I don't really have a committee report, but, um, I will be judging the little strawberry pageant, so look forward to seeing y'all out there. And just to add to that, um, since we did talk about historical, um, properties, there will be buses that will deliver people to downtown Floral City, they can go to the Heritage Museum, they can go over to the DeValle House, um, which is gonna be a great time and ways for somebody to see the oldest structure in the county. And then also, just to bring up, uh, the Big Bass Bluegrass Barbecue Kickoff Party on March tenth, on Friday from six to nine downtown Inverness, and that will be led off by a Big Bass Classic Fishing Tournament. So with fun fishing, music, and food, so I just wanted to bring that out to everybody's attention and give them a shout out. So it'll be a good time.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis?
I have three weeks between meetings, so I've got a lot here. So first off, we did TDC the day after our last meeting, uh, you may have read in the paper that we approved two hundred and fifty thousand to go to save Crystal River, it's specifically for three quarters of an acre of vacuuming, um, around the Hunter Springs Basin to try to finish that. The, um, previous party that put in the cages and did an experiment there, it didn't work, and so they really, they, they agreed to do part of it, but not all of it, they, we need to actually replant the three quarters of an acre in Hunter Springs Basin, so that's good. Also, under, um, tourism development, there is a move in that whole tourism industry, shall we say, for our, um, bed tax, to move from destination marketing to a little bit more destination management. We have been overrun with, and blessed by so many tourists coming here, thank you Nat Geo and Manatees, that, um, there's some issues that need to be handled, and it's nice that that's moving in that direction from a, um, best practices standpoint. And now for the other shoe to drop, um, Medical Examiner Board. We are working, uh, it's six counties, it's District Five and one county from District Twenty-four. I have spoken about this several times on the day, so I spoke to our former administrator, Mr. Oliver, about it. Um, it has now become a very close reality, we need a new medical examiner building. And so at the last meeting, um, they anointed me chair. Um, and so I drove a discussion on, instead of meeting quarterly, we need to meet monthly until we get this facility really on firm footing, because they want to put it in service by fiscal year twenty twenty-eight, which is right around the corner for all of this, so they asked that we come back with a funding source for our portion of it, which is currently at about one point six three million estimated, but one of my fellow commissioners on that Board from Seminole County believes that it, we may be on the hook for about six hundred and fifty more for our share, so we're looking at, I think we ought to plan for about two and a quarter million dollars as our share to build this new facility. I also encourage the, that Board, um, to look beyond the twenty-five-year mark, which is what they've been planning for, and buildings typically last fifty years, it would sure be a shame, cause our current medical examiner facility, they really looked at trying to just expand, but the footprint there is too small and too difficult, so expansion is not possible. We have worked really, really hard, um, to make taxpayer dollars go as far as possible. They are putting doctors in closets in the current medical examiner facility. If you think about how critical this is, loved ones want their, you know, deceased to be handled quickly, expeditiously, with care, and if we have this many people moving to Florida on a daily basis, that's going to increase the death count, right? So we are really busting at the seams capacity-wise. So I encourage them to look at a fifty-year plan, not a twenty-five-year plan, because buildings are typically last, well, you know, for fifty years. So we would only build for twenty-five, but we need to have a expansion plan, so we don't get locked into this. I mean, I'll be long gone off, off of this Board, but we, a lot of us share that, um, future thinking type thing, so. I would like to take Erin and, um, Mr. Howard agreed with that to the next meeting. Typically, the commissioners do have some staff there, either legal or budgetary, attend on occasion to these meetings, and then we've accelerated, so it'll be March tenth is our next meeting. Sorry to throw more on the pile, but.
Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner Finnegan? No, ma'am, thank you. Did I ask you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Did I ask you?
Yeah. Um, well, I had the, uh, February ninth, I had the, um, Citrus County Transportation Disadvantage Board, and, um, I enjoy that Board a lot. Um, I love, there's community members that come and they solely depend on.
I love, there's community members that come and they solely depend on our public transportation. And, you know, we, we worked on, trying to remember what we discussed as far as the future plan of, we looked at even possible grants for hybrid buses to help save the county some money and, and look to the future. It's a very important board, and I'm thankful I'm sitting on that. The next meeting that I went to was on February thirteenth. I sat in for Commissioner Bayes at the TBRPC. And it was a very long day. It started at nine AM and you know, that's the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, and they had a presentation. And the few times that I've been to that meeting, I, I have gleaned some information. And two things that I got from it was, they had a presentation from a Thousand Friends of Florida, and they talked about fiscal and sustainability development, which really, you know, perked my interest. And that growth doesn't have to harm our environment and or put undue tax burden on our citizens. And a lot of these programs, they're open, they would be willing to come and give us a presentation. We had a presentation, I think Commissioner Cannard might have been the only one on the board that when they did the presentation of the Suncoast Two, the Suncoast Parkway Two report for Citrus, they said that they would be happy to come back and give it to this board, and I don't know if staff has that on schedule yet.
We do. I believe it's on the March twenty eighth meeting.
Very good. I just thought that would be a nice refresher to see what they, you know, that study will tell us. And the next meeting is April tenth, and I've given the documentation to Commissioner Bayes, so I hand that baton back to you. And that is all I have for that. So we are at K. K one, Commissioner Finnegan, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sico reached out, I believe to everyone, so you should have all the information about a grant that they are applying for. When I reviewed it, it seems like those that are Sico customers could greatly benefit from this. It looks like for infrastructure. I did notice in our very own local mitigation strategy working group on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, that was a part of their minutes in supporting Sico and putting in this infrastructure that, so that seemed like this was a no-brainer to, to sign this and try to help them along to get their grant. Thank you.
So board, looking for a motion for K one.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair, to approve K one.
Commissioner Finnegan made the motion, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public input regarding K one? Seeing none. Is there any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. That passes five zero. L, Commissioner Jeff Cannard, District.
Yeah, the first, first item I've got on the agenda is just a discussion regarding Crystal Oaks Drive. I had the opportunity to speak to their homeowners association several weeks ago. And naturally, at the, at the top of their concerns is the amount of traffic using Crystal Oaks Drive. Currently, as well as the development that's been approved out there for the Rock Crusher Canyon property, the, the the construction on Highway forty-four just, just east of the Highway nineteen interchange has also seemed to have diverted more traffic over onto Crystal Oaks Drive. And I've got it on the agenda today to hopefully have a discussion about it and direct staff to take a look at this and come back with some recommendations for some traffic calming there. Potentially, you know, a, a, a four-way stop if it's warranted. There are some things that need to be looked at. It has been looked at in the past. But I don't know, I don't know how far, how far into the weeds we got with actually trying to, to slow things down through their neighborhood. There is, there is an awful lot of traffic there with Home Depot at the other end, at one end of, of Venable. And the interchange for the Suncoast Parkway at the other end of, of Crystal Oaks Drive, there are a lot of folks that are using that road, again, going right through their neighborhood. The speed limit posted through there is thirty-five. People are naturally pushing that, thirty-five, forty-five, and so forth coming through there. They're getting eighteen-wheelers moving through there, avoiding that intersection at nineteen. And, you know, delivery and so forth out, out to Highway nineteen to Home Depot. So if the board is, is interested, I'd like to see us, just direct staff, to take a look at it and come back with what measures are necessary to move forward with trying to address the traffic situation that they've got there in their neighborhood.
Board?
Yes?
I think Commissioner Finnegan.
I think that's a good idea to have staff address it. In the meantime, I don't know if we could reach out and have a stronger presence with the sheriff's office, or maybe some of their temporary flashing signs. And I don't know, this would be a question again for staff, when you mentioned the larger trucks going through. And of course, as we grow, more larger trucks are trying to make that cut through. I've seen in other areas where it says like no-through trucks, like where they just don't allow a certain tonnage. So maybe that's something we could look at, too.
That would, that, that's, that's a great thought, Commissioner. The, that was a concern that was brought up at the meeting. And, you know, it's not just a matter of, of those larger trucks going through their neighborhood. Those larger, heavier trucks are going to destroy that road much, much faster than what passenger vehicles are. In fact, I was, on the way here today, I was heading east on forty-four and saw, saw a big eighteen-wheeler turning, I guess that's turning south to head down Crystal Oaks Drive, and I thought, we've got to do look at this to see about what we can do to try and, try and slow down the traffic and, and get that back to a residential use road traveling through there. You know, like I said, maybe that involves, maybe that involves a four-way stop along through there to slow things down. I, I don't know, but those are things that, once staff can come back with us with some recommendations on steps that need to be taken, that hopefully we can address their concerns.
Commissioner Bay, Davis?
I just want to say thanks for bringing this forward. I think we all kind of knew that when the Suncoast dumped out there, it was just going to get that much worse. I frequently take that to get to Crystal River Airport, so I'm guilty. But I'm appalled that eighteen-wheelers are going down that road. That's not appropriate at all. I haven't seen one yet, but if there's anything we can do to, to limit that, obviously, as Mr. Oliver always said, you know, signs is not enforcement. So we can put up signs to say no trucks, but it's also going to have to be enforced. So.
There you go.
I'm good with it.
I'm just curious, and I, I would like to hear from staff on this because though I do sympathize and I understand where you're at, I mean, this is an enforcement problem. That the sheriff, I'm, I'm curious how, how often they've called the sheriff. And, and how does this differ from Pine Ridge? What's happening there? And I'm just curious what staff would say that we can and cannot do. Because I, I, I do think that we have problems with this. And I don't think big trucks should be going down there. I mean, that is what's ruining roads, you know, the, the wear and tear of roads, and that is not what that road is designed for. But again, I, if it would be okay with Assistant Administrator, if we could hear from staff.
Well, you know, and I, I don't know, cer- certainly that's, that's, that's your call and, and Maricel's call. But I didn't, I didn't bring this forward to put somebody on the spot right now, but to just elevate the discussion and say, this is, this has quickly become a problem due to a, due to several different things that have taken place. You know, certainly, we knew the Suncoast Parkway was coming. Home Depot's been there for a long time. Maybe what was not predicted the last time that they had discussions with staff about this was the, the approval of, or the sale of the Rock Crusher property and the approval of the development of all those homes there. That's going to put a lot of vehicles on that road very fast, when that, when that development moves forward. I had, I had gotten an email back, I think it was from Mr. Howard, when I asked for this to be put on the agenda. And somebody from staff that addressed it said that the last time that they approached us, they wanted four-way stops at every intersection. That was not my understanding when I was there speaking. It was, it was a four-way stop someplace in there to slow, to slow this traffic down. At that time, again, it's just, I'm just going, just going off of what I recall from that evening, was that a traffic count was done and it didn't meet, the traffic count didn't meet warrants for both directions. Well, one direction is just the people that live on that street. The other direction, Crystal Oaks, clearly has gotten much busier. Again, like I said, not just with residential traffic, but with a lot of commercial traffic looking to avoid the construction on Highway nineteen. And it's just a shortcut out to, out to Home Depot and other businesses out there to deliver.
And, and I, I do appreciate this because what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing is that this circles back to what Commissioner Baye said a couple, a month ago. I mean, we have a lot of issues that have to be addressed transportation-wise. And we have to talk about it, and we have to figure it out. And, you know, where do we start? Because not only this road today, we've heard from, about Cardinal, Cardinal, and, you know, when the Parkway gets to four eighty-six, we're going to have another situation. So I'm just curious what Commissioner Baye, who, you know, you had the previous experience of being on the board ten years ago, addressing some of these issues. And, and what, what do you think about this and what we can do?
Well, I, this, well, the prior board actually approved, I think it was a nine-hundred-plus home development out at Rock Crusher. So I, I, I mean, that's only going to exacerbate this problem. So again, when we talk about financing and funding transportation, it's a long window. You know, by the time you do your, your research and development, your PDNEs, you get, get into the funding cycle, I mean, you're, that's years out. And we're way behind the eight ball that we, we should be talking about this stuff. You know, but it still goes back to funding. We talk about SCOP, I mean, I would venture to guess that our population estimates are probably woefully underestimated, especially when you consider the, the winter timers that come back here. I would think our population is probably closer to one seventy-five, one eighty. With the developments that we're, we're approving, you know, I think four eighty-six is going to be in trouble almost out of the gate with all that development. There's not much you're going to do about that. I mean, it's kind of at capacity. You're at capacity on forty-four. That's our only east-west connector to seventy-five throughout this county. And then you have all these side roads that we need to talk about with development. So I think we need to direct staff to come back, really kind of look at where the new, the new development has been approved. And we need to probably start doing some traffic counts and figure out the highest and best use of, of dollars and figure out what, how we're going to fund it. Because gas tax is not even nine million dollars. That's for new, new construction. I know we talked about at the planning board, or this commission board, about readdressing impact fees. That would help with some of that. I don't know if we're going to talk about concurrency. That's another area that we can address to come up with funding. We've got to start talking about it. I mean, it's, we're way, way behind the eight ball.
Absolutely. Commissioner?
Yes, and I, I agree completely with what Commissioner Baye is saying. I just, I want to make sure we don't expand the conversation too much too early. I just, let's, can we get back to directing staff, come back with some stuff as it relates to Crystal Oaks Drive, what would be, what would be the next steps? Now, related to what Commissioner Baye was saying, that much larger conversation, we need to be looking at what, what bonds are out there that will be getting paid off. When will they be paid off? That potentially, there's, there's revenue there that could be bonded for road expansion. Certainly, the impact fees. We, I am a, I'm a firm believer that we need to get, we need, we need to get it to a hundred percent on our impact fees. DOT is looking for us to do everything that we can in funding, in funding these capacity improvements, and then, and then they'll get involved. So I do think there's, there's some things for us to look at. We need, we need to make sure that, that we're not, we're not giving our staff work that we could be sending to the NPO. You know, the NPO, these different studies, they can do those things, and they're going to get reimbursed by DOT. I know the, the traffic counts, I don't know, I don't know if we have a new agreement in place yet, but there used to be an agreement. Hernando County has, has the NPO do their traffic counts for them. Citrus County, we have traditionally done our own traffic counts. And then at one point, we're getting reimbursed by the NPO. It's not a tremendous amount of money, but it's money. It's taxpayer money. We, we, you know, I've said it before, that we did our, our last transportation impact fee study that Citrus County paid for it. Hernando County had the NPO pay for it. NPO got reimbursed by DOT. That's something we should be doing. So before we, before we necessarily start tasking staff with, let's do this, let's get this done, let's get this done, maybe what we want to ask them is, what things do we need? And then let's take that to the NPO and say, these are, these are studies. And I, I, I think that, that we will find an advocate for us in the, in the NPO director when they see that, that, that we are working to, to push our impact fees to where, to where they need to be to move these projects along. So thank you. Good, good discussion.
And if I'm not mistaken, isn't the NPO in the process of starting the Long Range Transportation Plan for Citrus?
I'm not sure. I'll tell my head.
I believe they are.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we would like to have the staff look at something that could help Crystal Oaks. And I love the idea of signage and the, somebody needs to speak to the sheriff and see about the signs, the slowdown that they have. I don't know what you call that thing. And, and also, we also would like to hear from staff on what we need to do to move these future projects forward. What, what do, that, what do they need so that we can go to the NPO and maybe the TP, TBRPC and see what we can get from these boards that we're paying to be a part of? So, anything else?
Madam Chair, I'd like, I'd like for staff to come back with next steps for Crystal Oaks Drive. This is what we're going to need to look at, you know, we need to look at traffic count. We need to look at speeds. We, you know, and in, in interim, a stopgap measure would be reaching out to sheriff's office and trying to slow things down there. You know, that, and that, just the presence of a deputy out there is going to calm traffic. But what we want are some real steps. What's going to, what's going to slow this down long-term and encourage people to stay on forty-four and nineteen that are designed to handle that heavy traffic and get this road back to a residential road as it ought to be.
Commissioner Baye?
I think it's spot-on. I think there, there has to be a way that you can put a weight limit, which would keep the semis off that road. That would be probably step one.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, board? Okay, I believe staff has gotten good direction, and thank you for bringing this forward, Commissioner Cannard. L two?
L two, this one's, hopefully, this one will sail right through here with a unanimous, with unanimous support. will sail right through here with a unanimous, with unanimous support. Uh, the Key Center is asking for a letter of support to apply for USDA grant uh, to upgrade their IT equipment, to go from pieces that they've kind of put together and donate, had donated and so forth, uh, to going up to something, um, uh, much better than what they have, much more, um, uh, up-to-date technology. And, uh, it's grant, they're just looking to get a letter from the county commission saying we support it.
Madam Chair, it'd be my great honor and privilege to ask that staff push this forward.
So I have a motion for approve and authorize the chairman to sign the letter of support for the Key Training Center from Commissioner Bay's, a second from Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on L two?
L one, L one.
No, we just did L one, we're on L. Okay, um, L one doesn't, we didn't make a motion, that was just discussion. But you can, you can speak at the, the next, soon we'll have open to the public. So.
I've got, I've got some information that are going to help solve.
Yeah, and, and, but there was no motion, so the procedure is at, at the, open to the public, you'll speak. So we're on L two, is there any comments on L two from the public? Seeing none, any further board discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Okay, that passes five zero.
Madam Chair, yeah, one more thing that I would like to bring, uh, just, just a discussion. It's, it's nothing that, um, that needs a vote. Uh, the, um, uh, as everybody's aware, we're, we're working on, uh, this boat ramp design up at the Barge Canal. And, um, the prices for that, for that project have also come back extraordinarily high. Uh, the, uh, the Coast Guard is moving forward with their plans to also locate a station up there, uh, just, uh, just west of where our boat ramp, it will be in a budding property. And, um, my, my thought on this is, is that, uh, maybe there's, maybe there's, um, a, a, a deal, if you will, an arrangement to be made to possibly look at sharing a ramp, um, that the Coast Guard, rather than them building their own ramp right next to our ramp, maybe the Coast Guard folks would be interested in sharing a ramp. I don't know if they have any interest or not. Uh, but before we start reaching out to them, I just want to see what the board's thoughts were. We're going to need bathrooms up there. Uh, so the Coast Guard, my guess would be that they would be putting in some type of a package plant. Uh, so maybe there's, there's, uh, an arrangement to be made there to share in some of the infrastructure parts of this, uh, between our ramp and the Coast Guard. And I just, if, if the board thinks it's a good idea, I'd like, I'd like to see our county administrator just reach out to, uh, I don't know that we have a contact at the Coast Guard, but certainly Dixie Hollins that sold the property to the Coast Guard. Uh, he would have that contact and have the county administrator reach out to them and see if there's a conversation to be had there.
Thank you. Board, do you have any objections to that suggestion?
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. You got a consensus.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So I'll have a go.
Okay, uh, M. Commissioner Rebecca Bayes, you have anything?
Nothing else.
Commissioner Holly Davis, do you have anything else?
Yes, ma'am. Um, went to National Association of Counties for the first time, uh, week before last with Veronica Campshaw. So all of you should have a packet from her on all the incredible amount of materials and meetings that we attended. It was, um, quite the learning experience, um, really good knowledge to bring back to the county as well as possible funding sources. I don't know if the other commissioners took the, took advantage of our new congressman, Gus Ballerakis's, um, offer to meet with staff, but I was, um, both dismayed and yet pleased to hear that we have not received heretofore, um, the level of federal funds that we should have been receiving as a county. So I'm dismayed that all that has been, that opportunity has been lost. But I'm also happy to hear that we may have additional sources of funding for some of our projects going forward, um, due to his fine attention to this county. So very much appreciate that. Do please look at those materials from NACO, it was an outstanding conference. And, um, we should definitely look at more of us going to that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, and I have nothing. Madam Attorney, do you have anything?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public. If you'd like to speak on, um, anything, please fill out a green card, tell us your name and where you live. And you have three minutes to speak, unless you have a letter on file, you can speak for five minutes. So welcome.
I can speak for five minutes?
If you have a letter on file.
Okay, I'm Ken Walters, the president of the Crystal Oak Civic Association. And Commissioner Kennard was our guest speaker in January. Did a great job, everybody, we had like seventy people turn out for that, so that was terrific. You're very thorough, you've done a lot of homework on this, but let me bring you all up to date, save you some time. I started, I started working on this problem before I was president. I met with the sheriff's department several times over at my house. Um, we had deputies, detectives, sergeants come over. We talked about the stop signs. So our plan was if we had four stop signs, it would probably keep the truck traffic from coming on the road, period. Because the way that the road's designed, if you start at Rock Crusher, it comes up like a little rise. And then it starts going down around a curve. We put the stop signs at the bottom of the curve. So the trucks, they have to stop there, then they have to go through their gears again, going uphill to forty-four. They're not going to do that. So that would prevent the truck traffic, it would also slow the traffic down. They thought that was a good idea, but I took it to the county. Um, well, I don't know what department it is, Transportation Department. They said it was a federal law saying we couldn't put up four stop signs. Cause there's not enough traffic going both ways. So now, there are two signs. There's one at Rock Crusher and there's one at forty-four. They're two hundred feet, roughly two hundred feet from the entrance to those intersections. It says no trucks over ten tons. But by the time the truckers are there, they can't turn around. So those signs are worthless. The ones that would make a difference are the stop signs that they won't let us put up. So that's where our problem lies. That's where our current problem has been, like, from when it started. So if there's a way that you can override the Transportation Department and we can put up those four stop signs, that'll solve a heck of a lot of problems. The sheriff's department, they can't make the laws, they don't enforce them. They're doing a great job, we call them, hey, we got speeders, we got trucks. They send a deputy out like right away. And they pull a few of them over, give some tickets, but that's a Band-Aid. That's not going to solve the problem. And then the part about the nine hundred and fifty homes that are going to be in there, that's just going to multiply it, especially if the entrances and exits are going to dump into Crystal Oaks Drive. So if we can prevent that from happening, put the stop signs in, because construction trucks, sorry about that. Construction trucks are going to multiply the problem. So, I mean, that, that information right there is going to save you some time. I mean, you can go and discuss and discuss it, but a lot of these things have already been done and turned down. So if you can override the Transportation Department, put those stop signs in there, that'll solve a world of problems. Okay?
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to mention the fact that I have essential tremors and are unable to fill out this card. Somebody would need to help me. My name is Raymond Bangle, I have been a resident of Citrus County, living in the Crystal Oaks subdivision since nineteen ninety-three. I've seen our great county grow in time with the explosion or expansion of the Crystal Oaks Drive, meeting up the Venable Drive certainly brought on additional traffic. Most certainly a challenge with the intersection of State Highway forty-four. That intersection is now growing from a challenge to disasters waiting to happen since the inception of the Sun Coast Parkway extension, just a few hundred feet from us. Now, I know we're talking dollars and cents here, for the rest of what I have to say, I'm talking the cents end of it. You folks are going to have to talk the dollar end of it. I, for one, am certainly not opposed to the planned development, nor to the expansion of the Sun Coast Parkway through our county. However, I have personally witnessed one after-affect traffic crash and numerous near misses to eastbound traffic attempting to assess the Parkway, get on ramp, which is only about fifty, yes, fifty feet from the existing Crystal Oaks Drive, very close. The change of entrance to Crystal Oaks Drive as a means of new construction, not of improvement, needs to be addressed. I know I threw, we threw this in there, we weren't discussing this earlier. With the cooperation of the state to possibly a westward movement of Crystal Oaks Drive from near the vicinity of the Tipton Street, where, by the way, they have a parking area for those that wish to use the Viking Trail and so on and so forth. Westerly approximately a thousand feet, give or take, to across from the existing Saint Michael's Grief Arch, Orthodox Church with a newly installed traffic signal. Common sense approach to this, an alternative sign needs to be addressed and addressed soon. I thank you in advance for your kind attention and consideration to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Amy? Do you have his information? Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else? See a lot of red shirts out there, anything else? No? Well. Well, thank you, and, um, I'm glad that Commissioner Kennard brought this forward. Um, so at this time, I'm going to close open to the public. Uh, we have some upcoming meetings. Uh, regular meeting is March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at one P M, right here in the Citrus County Courthouse, room one hundred. And then we have a regular meeting, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, at one P M, right here in room one hundred. And then the April meeting is April eleventh, a regular meeting at one P M, right here in room one hundred. We have some upcoming workshops. One is the Board of County Commissioners Strategic Planning Retreat, Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, nine A M to twelve P M, at the Citrus County Courthouse, room one hundred. We're having that here. Hmm, okay, and then preliminary budget hearing, Wednesday, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, Citrus County Courthouse, room one hundred. Governing body of the Spec- Special Library District, eight thirty A M. Fire Protection Special District, eight forty-five A M, and the B O C C at nine A M. Starting the budget process. And then, uh, tentative budget hearing Thursday, September seventh, twenty twenty-three, at five oh one P M, right here in room one hundred. And finally, we have a final budget hearing announcement Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, at five oh one P M, here in the room one hundred. Um, that is our upcoming workshop and special meetings. Uh, we do not have any public hearings scheduled right now. And I am, it is my pleasure to adjourn this meeting. It is four oh two, Amy. Thank you.